This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. There is a presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We are, I do not believe we have anybody signed up for public participation. Is that correct Gina? Okay, so we'll go ahead and dive right in. The first item after that on our agenda today is discussion and possible action to select new names for Robert E. Lee High School and John Tyler High School. I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Marty Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. Trustees, good morning. As talked about at the regular board meeting, the district administration has conducted exactly what we said we were going to do in regard to providing you something today for your consideration and up to y'all, you know, when you want to take that action. But just to recap of what we went through last time at the July 20th school board meeting, presented the timeline to the board, the board went ahead and also adopted revisions to policy that already existed. CW Local, that was the first reading of the policy, or excuse me, that was the second reading of the policy actually, because the first reading was actually presented to the board at the, at a special call meeting on July 16th. Per tradition and per the way that this board has done this for 20-plus years, you have a first and a second reading in regard to policy. It gives plenty of time for feedback with the public and it also gives plenty of time with the board to make any type of recommendations or adjustments to the policy. We did have some commentary about that from the DIAS, which I went ahead and adopted the policy as presented with the understanding it is a local policy and those can be adjusted, revised, deleted, et cetera, et cetera, per statute. Can't do anything about legal policy, but local policy is something that can be adjusted. The district sent a media advisory on the dates and the process for campus name submission. You probably have to be in a different part of the world to not know what the process was, what the timeline was, the paper covered it, the media, the print and the television media both covered it extensively. We also did a whole lot in regard to advertising, how to do the, how to submit a name suggestion via the website, via email, social media as well. We got it out there. TISD TV also had it on there. We had text messages that went out, some of y'all probably received a lot of these, I know I did, phone calls and emails. Website, email and other submissions were accepted predominantly, a lot of them came through in regard, through the actual online system that we devised and clearly stated with the pulldowns, per the board adopted policy to meet those criteria on your submission. Now, we did receive those that did not meet the board policy and we have provided that list to the board as well, but we also have also called down the name suggestions that did meet policy as well. And that's what the group at, both focus groups worked with as we went through this. Jennifer Hines, our Executive Director of Communications, met with two focus groups, one at each high school, to discuss the names submitted. The focus group consisted of three staff members, it was a principal, the head football coach and a faculty member, three students and then three parents as well. Both schools had a diverse representation, similar to their student body makeups as well. So we were very proud that we were able to put that together and have representation there within the ethnicities. The focus groups then provided the comments and a list of possible names to the superintendent. I did not meet with the focus groups. Ms. Hines did that. She provided those names to the superintendent. And then per policy, the superintendent provides no more than three names per school to the board and then the board eventually selects new names on your, at your discretion. At 4500 Red Raider Drive, the focus group submitted two names with one name as their unanimous favorite. Focus group would also be happy with the second name. The focus group believes they could build a great culture around the preferred name. The two names that were submitted by the focus group are Tyler Legacy High School, Tyler Liberty High School. You'll find interesting that both schools prefer to have the actual name of the town for their school included, not just Legacy or something else, but actually have the name of the city. Per an email that I did send to the board, there's a lot of reasons behind that, but one is they feel like that knowing, a lot of pride in where they live and whenever they across, you know, prestige locally, regionally and then across the state was something that meant, meant something to them. Both schools said that. At 3535 Lion Lane, the focus group submitted three names. Focus group would also be happy with any of the three names. And again, it was very important to the focus group that the word Tyler be a part of the school's name. Even before we went through this process, that was one request by a couple of staff members that I value their opinion that said, you know, Doc, can we always, can we at least have Tyler in our name? It's always been a part of our name at this school. So wanted to make sure we honored that as well. The three names in alphabetical order are Tyler Heritage High School, Tyler High School and Tyler United High School. And as always, we appreciate the Board of Trustees and we also appreciate the community for their efforts and dedication in adjusting the names of the two comprehensive flagship high schools here in Tyler, Texas. And that's the end of our report. We'll open it up for y'all's comments or discussion. Jennifer Hines is here, we've got both high school principals that are here as well that did serve on those focus groups.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Dr. Crawford. I know personally over the last few years that I noticed a couple of names jumped out to me that I've, you know, thought that if that happened, then they could be. So I guess our, I'll open the floor up for discussion and, you know, personally, I would be thrilled if we could make a decision on this today and go ahead and get this chapter behind us and move on to opening up the school year, you know, with successful student outcomes and not have to have another meeting that burdens the staff and other district employees for us to discuss this, but that's my personal opinion. Does anybody have anything, any comments, anything to say as far as, I tell you what, let's just do it one at a time. Let's just talk about Lee first. And since there was apparently one very clear frontrunner and which one was that, Dr. Crawford, I don't know that-
Tyler Legacy.
Legacy, okay. Legacy was the clear frontrunner for the focus group, Tyler Legacy. Anybody have any comments on those two things?
Top question.
The song?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Just, Ms. Hines, the dynamics of the focus group. I know you had student input. I was wondering if you had any other students other than the ones that were on the committee that gave input regarding the school or did you allow other people to come before the committee or was it just the focus group in a room making the decisions by themselves?
Good morning, Board. We had three students representing, representing a wide range of groups on each campus. We met with the focus groups and they had an opportunity to go back and speak with their friends, their family, have discussions with them. And then when they came back, they were able to share those conversations with those other people. So as for somebody physically coming additionally into the focus group after it began, we did not do that in this process, but their voices were heard during the meeting.
Okay. And that was on both campuses?
Both campuses, yes.
Total amount of names that were submitted?
The total amount of names, including the ones that did not meet policy, was over 2,200 and they were sent through the website, but also through email and also we received several letters.
Okay.
I'm sure some of the names were duplicated. Was there any reference in the ranking them according to the name that was submitted from the committee in regards to their input of the 2,200? I'm sure some of the names were duplicated, right? I would think.
Yes. One thing that I can tell you is that a lot of the names were the same name, just in different orders. For example, you might have Tyler West High School or West Tyler High School or West Tyler City High School or Tyler City West High School. So you did have duplicates in that sense, but they were moving a lot of the names around.
Okay.
I will tell you that both committees were very adamant that directional names not be in the name of either high school.
Mr. Washman, I will just open it up by thanking the staff and the focus groups for the efficient and mature procedure that you went through to come up with these recommendations. It's great and especially in a heightened anxious time like this to have a group come together and just go through the process and really take their job seriously and, and like I say, in a very mature way. I appreciate that. You know, that's been one of my concerns is that we get too emotional one way or the other about this and we end up doing something that somebody's going to have to fix, you know, in another 60 years. So thank you to Dr. Crawford and thank you to Board and Committee members for that. I, I would say that I'm great with whatever the committee has recommended. I think, I kind of put myself back like if I were making this decision in 1958, you know, how could we have done better than we did maybe at that time? So I'm comfortable with the committee and what they came up with and would support their, whichever their number one recommendation was for the 4500 Red Raider Drive.
I have a comment. I like the names, I like the choices that they made. I want to also thank the committees because I know it had to be pretty rough going through that many different suggestions. However, the main reason that we were changing the names of the two schools is the connotation of the last names of the, of the people that they were named after. Legacy High School or Liberty High School, to me, would be sufficient for the name of on Red Raider Drive, but by including Tyler in there, we're kind of defeating the purpose. And we don't have to have the name of the city in the school for people to know where the school is. I mean, other cities have more than one school and they don't necessarily have the name of the city in the name of the school. Off the top of my head, I can think of maybe Killeen. They have Ellison High School, it's not Killeen Ellison. So my, that's my only reservation. I do like Legacy or Liberty, but I would prefer, I think that we might be shooting ourselves in the foot if we leave Tyler in the name of the school as well.
I'll echo fellow Board members' appreciation for the group that worked on this and sorted through a whole bunch of names, some of which were not only not consistent with policy, but probably not acceptable for normal adult conversation. So I appreciate the options that have been presented to us. The, and I, both of these names for 4500 Red Raider Drive are okay with me. I do, I do think that a charting, for lack of a better term, a middle course that doesn't try to obliterate the history of the school, but celebrates the parts of the history of the school that need to be remembered and celebrated. I think all of the names submitted allow school leaders to do that and I think that's, that's important. Although I appreciate the efficiency of the process and I know that we do have a website that needs to be finalized and launched and so there is a time urgency and we also have the, the beginning of school looming out there. Particularly, and I'll jump a little bit ahead, in an environment where the school has not recommended a particular name, spending the weekend to get some feedback on those is something that I would appreciate the opportunity to do. For 4500 Red Raider Drive, it's not as critical to me since the committee recommended one, but for the other, where there's three names, personally, we've, you know, we saw these names yesterday, we're told to keep them confidential. I've not gone out and sought input on the attractiveness of any of these names. So I know that places a burden on staff to hold another meeting, but again, through the lens of we're, we're making a decision that hopefully lasts 50, 60 years, maybe forever, spending a few more days to get more specific input on it, I think would be prudent. Does anybody else have anything they want to include?
Thank you for taking the time and the, the time to do this. I know it was not easy. I'm not sure, both the names, Tyler Legacy High School, Tyler Liberty High School are fine. I'm kind of like Ms. Nations, if we were trying to eradicate the word Tyler, but that's where we live and most cities have a place, a school that's named after the town that they live in. So I'm, we're twixt in between, I'm just not sure.
I did have one question. There, there has been some branding for 4500 Red Raider Drive previously around Tyler Lee. So I remember some, kind of just the initials, T and L. Both these names obviously continue that. Either Dr. Crawford or Coach Priest, could you comment on the prevalence of TL uniforms and whether or not that, and I guess for visual performing arts as well, and whether or not that saves us any money by doing something that's TL?
The TL would, where we rebranded a couple of years ago, we called it TL. Several of our sports, most of our sports teams use TL, favorite teams, Oreo and T. So I would say a lot of our basketball uniforms, a lot of our, there's several sports teams that use TL.
So not asking for a specific number, I know that's unfair to ask. I mean, are we talking about tens of thousands of dollars or are we talking about thousands of dollars or hundreds of dollars of uniforms that could be saved and used if we go with these names?
When you start looking at, so it's going to be your newer uniforms, your smaller uniforms? If I had to choose, I would go with the older ones.
Yes, please.
So it's going to be our newer uniforms? Yeah, I think boys' basketball, even girls' basketball bought new uniforms and they went with a TL on the shorts and, and make probably like a little tag back. I know Track went with TL on backpacks, things like that. So, I mean, when you start looking at it, it's, you know, basketball uniforms are going to cost somewhere around $2,500 for a set, you know, being at home, away, doing those things, backpacks, you know, they're going to be, you know, 35 bucks adding the, so when they put embroidery that on there, that's going to be, you know, somewhere in the 45 range. So, I mean, it'll be in the tens.
In the thousands of dollars. You asked, hundreds of thousands or thousands of dollars?
Or tens.
It'd have been the, did you ask, did you say the tens?
It would be in the tens.
Tens, thousands, okay. Any virtual performing arts, any, any issue there? No? Okay.
From the kids' perspective, pure uniforms, just one of those uniforms, great.
Yep, okay. Mr. Martinez?
I'm going to echo Mr. Burkhild and just say thanks for, for all the hard work. I think we laid out the process for the focus groups and we should respect the process and if, if they're the ones that did all the heavy work, then certainly am prepared to pull the trigger right now if that's something we want to do. But I'm happy with, with Legacy, Tyler Legacy.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dan Crawford and all the focus group for doing what you did. I've heard from people on both sides for the last few years of this issue that want to honor, either want to honor the legacy that was left by prior generations and their honorable achievements, or begin a, a new legacy, you know, that was unfettered by the, you know, questionable intentions of decades gone by. So Legacy High School seems to me to adequately address both of those arguments and as a Lee grad, I support it. To your point, Tyler Legacy also enables us to salvage much of the branding and save on costs by keeping the TL logo that is most, most often used. So, new school, new legacy, I'm, I'm all for it. And I'll, I was gonna, I'll save this for probably my, my John Tyler comment, but, you know, I am a proud Tyler. Tyler has been a city since the 1840s, long before the Civil War. And I think what we're addressing here is not necessarily the name of our city, but the questionable decisions made in the 50s and 60s that got us in this place. The question to go away from the name of your original city high school to name of a specific guy, you know, at the same time you basically named a school on the other side of town after a specific guy, both of them having ties to a dark part of our nation's history. And I don't personally have a problem with the city of Tyler, as much as I respect you, Dr. Nation, I really don't, because I almost think it, it shows the public that, that we're not ashamed of the city we live in. That's, you know, Tyler, Texas is the home of many great people for a lot of generations and I don't mind paying homage to that. That's just my, my personal preference. So for the board, does everybody feel comfortable? Do you want to split these motions out, maybe? Nope?
Well, I, I, I think we should split them out, but I want to make a comment too. I want to make a comment also, of course. I want to appreciate, I want to appreciate the work of the focus groups. I'm sure they both, both had a challenge coming up with the names. In regards to the name, the poet Tyler, I have no problem with the name Tyler, it is in the city, I, you know, and like Ms. Atkins said, most cities have a school in that city named after the city. So I have no problem with that in particular. So I do agree with Mr. Hager in regards to the time and being able to get input. I think we as the board were very cooperative in regards to not going to our constituents and saying anything to them regarding the names that we received the day before yesterday or whichever day it was. So I think that we should have the opportunity as well, similar to the focus group, to be able to go and talk to individuals that we can get input from to make sure that we are making the proper decision. So I think that that, that would be important and I say that because I felt like it was important also from the beginning to have community input. So if we don't allow that, we don't allow us as representatives to have our constituents give us direct input regarding the names. And I, and I feel like that's important from my perspective. I do appreciate the observation, Mr. Hager, about the TL in saving money for the district. I think that's very important. When we talk about costs associated with it, I appreciate that observation and I think it will save the, the district some funding in regards to purchasing of items. So I have no objection to the, to the name in regards to Tyler Legacy or Tyler High School. I think that that, they both are somewhat appropriate. I don't know if that would have been the first choice, my first choice, but since it was submitted and the group spent a lot of time, I'm sure, discussing these names, I can go along with it. But I do think we need time to talk to our constituents about it. I think it's important, it's important enough that we use time to adequately make sure that we selected the right names and that we have an opportunity to talk to individuals in the community regarding it as well. Coming back with these three names as possibly the final selection or the five names as possible selection and make an decision based on what we hear.
I'd like to clarify something. I am a native Tyler Iden and I've always been so very, very proud of the city of Tyler. I love Tyler. And that's not, that's not my reservation in the name of, of the schools. My reservation is the backlash that we may get from other people due to what our purpose was in the first place. But no, I'm not, I'm not ashamed of Tyler. I love Tyler, so, just to clarify.
And I can understand what Dr. Nation's saying regarding that because it was an issue with the name quote unquote Tyler. I don't have a problem with it. The city's name Tyler, I don't think we're going to go back and change the city of Tyler's name, you know, based on that history, but I think that it's important that we take that in consideration and I think that that would be important for us to get input regarding it, to see how individuals feel about it and then we can come back and decide. So like I said, I have no reservations on using Tyler, but some people might. And if we do select a name without getting proper input, we may be back here again for some reason. I'd hate to think of that, Lord knows. That would be my last alternative, but I think it's important that we don't rush and make a hasty decision when that could possibly be an issue.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Just briefly, you know, when we, when I looked at the name change issue, I, I said we have to take each issue separately and we aren't just knee jerk reaction to political pressure, blah, blah, blah. So I appreciate Dr. Nation's concern there and, but to me, the, this is a totally separate issue, kind of like Wade said. You know, when John Tyler, when Tyler High was renamed in 1958 to John Tyler, something happened there. I wasn't around, I'm not going to say what it was or what it wasn't, but for some reason they, they left Tyler High and put a man's name on it. The fact that they put another man's name on the school in South Tyler and both had connections to the Confederacy does seem a little bit strange to me. But as far as the city of Tyler and Tyler ISD and, you know, that's not, that's not connect, that, to me, that's not a connection to some man's name that was in the Confederacy, Confederate Congress. That is our city. It was named because John Tyler was President of the United States when Texas was annexed. It has a tie to what we're doing here. So I have no, no issue and I, I mean, if, I think we need to be able to separate what we're looking at and I know y'all all are, but we've got to be able to separate it. We can't just lump everything- We can't just lump everything into a big change. So, uh, as far as these two go, I don't, for me, I don't think having more time on the, on the forty-five hundred Red Raider Drive vote is gonna do, is gonna make any difference between Tyler Legacy and Tyler Liberty, and I don't think there's gonna be, I think reasonable people are gonna say, you know what? We're not eliminating the name of Tyler, which has been our city. So, I'm comfortable moving forward if y'all are, but I'll, I'll go along with what the majority of the board wants to do.
Mr. Bergfeld, I agree with what you said. I, I feel more comfortable with forty-five hundred Red Raider Drive moving forward since there was a clear recommendation of the committee. I feel less comfortable, I know we haven't talked about the other school, I feel less comfortable with that one since they didn't have a clear indication. And so, if we wanted, if, if, if the board wanted to address one and get input on the other, I certainly, I could support that.
I would, I'm gonna recommend for forty-five hundred Red Raider Drive to go ahead and, and entertain a motion today if somebody wants to do that. And then, then we can discuss John Tyler. Is that okay? All right. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for Tyler Legacy High School.
I'll move that we, uh, we rename the school at forty-five hundred Red Raider Drive Tyler Legacy High School.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The ayes have it, uh, six-one. Tyler Legacy High School is the new name for the former Robert E. Lee High School. I know we've already talked a little bit about this, but if we could pull up on the, uh, the board on thirty-five, thirty-five Lyon Lane, we have, you know, Tyler Heritage, Tyler High, Tyler United High School. For me personally, it, even just seeing it right here, I love the idea of, of Tyler High School. Tyler High was in existence from eighteen, circa eighteen eighty, I think, until nineteen fifty-eight. That's seventy-eight years or so when it was renamed to John Tyler High School, and we've kinda been over, over that. That was seven before, seven years before they built a new school over there on Lyon Lane and Loop in nineteen sixty-five. Like Andy, I don't know why, for, for sure, why it was changed at that point. However, I do believe that changing it back to the original Tyler High School would, in a sense, correct a questionable decision made there in the fifties and honor our city's original high school, named after the city and not after a specific man, as it should've remained, in my opinion, all along. Our town has been named Tyler, like I said, since eighteen forty-six, and I'm proud of being from here. I believe in this community, and I believe in the children of this community and their potential. And I'm proud to have the name of my hometown on, on that school. And, uh, I always thought, I'm even kinda, I jokingly say, if, if the JT logo wants to get kept, I'm okay with that, 'cause we can tell them that it's just Tyler. So, um, JT always claimed the championships and the accomplishments of Tyler High School. You see over there at Rose Stadium, good work on the field, by the way. But over there at Rose Stadium, there's a, there's a title from, uh, Tyler High School from the nineteen thirties that's, that's under that John Tyler column. And, uh, you know, it's always, it's always had Tyler High in its, uh, in its blue blood over there. So, I'm all for Tyler High School, and that's my opinion. I'll open it up to the floor.
Again, I'll comment. I'm kinda leaning, um, toward Tyler High School, because that's where my mom graduated from, Tyler High School. However, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't, um, repeat the same comments about the Tyler being as a part of the schooling.
I have just a couple of questions, um, from a naming convention standpoint in terms of what's customary throughout the state. Are there examples, Dr. Crawford, that you can think of, of multi-high school, um, communities that have one named after the town and one, um, named after something else? Or do they often change those names?
It's fighting words in Grand Prairie, Texas to refer to Grand Prairie High School as North Grand Prairie High School versus South Grand Prairie High School. It is Grand Prairie High. It doesn't bother me, 'cause I grew up in all over the state, to be honest with you, so.
I can think of.
And it's the, when it's the north-south game, that's what they call them in the South Intellis. They call it the south-north game. I always called it the north-south game. And they might, they might not let me back into Grand Prairie if I ever say that. So, yes, there are examples of it. There's Lubbock High, Lubbock Coronado, Lubbock Monterey. There's Denton High, Denton Ryan.
I think everywhere.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of examples.
Midland, Garland.
For the OG school to be named after the city, and then other ones just sprouted off after that, so.
Mesquite.
I don't think y'all are in a jam to consider this, uh, of reverting back and going retro on that and going vintage. There's nothing wrong with that, too. Vintage is cool right now, so. So, I echo what y'all been saying, be proud of where you live. This is a great town and a great community. And it was, it, it could've easily been named James K. Polk, Texas. But by fate, or William Henry Harrison, I think he was the guy that, is he the one that died?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, Harrison, Texas. I'm just, I, I think y'all are going down the right path on it, but it's y'all's deal and get community input if you need it. But yes, there are examples to answer your question. Austin High, the, the Maroons. Houston, Sam Houston High School. There's a, there's a lot of examples.
Okay.
In regards to my comment, I feel like, once again, like I said before, I would appreciate going back to the community, but since we addressed the one on Roblee, Rob, Rob, well, Roblee Leaf Campus, I would prefer to have gone back on both. But since we didn't, I can accept the Tyler High School as the preferred name because it was originally. When they changed it with integration, that they changed it to Tyler High, which it should've stayed at Tyler High, there's no justification for changing it to John Tyler. That's very offensive to me as an individual, for, you know, for whatever reason they came up to change it. So, I, I'm not opposed to going back to Tyler High. And since we're not going back to the community, I think that would be the logical vote for me in that regard, is to go with what it was before. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom.
Another question for Dr. Crawford. There was, I know, a value that you held, I think many of us held as well, was to try to avoid winners and losers in this process to the best we could, and that one of the arguments for changing both schools was to, um, to not make it look like one school won and one school lost and just the, the management and leadership challenges that creates for, uh, both principals and for district leadership. Do you have any concerns, um, related specifically to that dynamic? If, if we did choose Tyler High, is that so close that one school looks like they got to keep their name, the other? Is that a concern for you or not?
You know, I'm, y'all have been around me long enough now, most of y'all have. I'm more of a can-do guy and a Pollyanna guy, and a we're gonna make the best of whatever we come up with guy. I see both of those names as olive branches to our community, who, while the debate that had, that was had at this dius was centered around, um, the past. I do think that there's people in this room that, that went to, um, one of those schools, and I know a lot of folks that went to Tyler High and, and John Tyler that did not love or hold their, um, loyalty to that school because of, of the, of the people that it was named after. We, we, we've discussed that here. So, my point being is, is that I do think, in my opinion, and being a very, uh, a guy that sees and tries to seize the sunshine instead of the, instead of the night. This is a, both of these names are both, I think, tributes back to those school experiences. Not, not the tribute to the, to the individuals named after, but, that, so I, I'd say that that's how I would view it. I don't know if everybody's gonna view it that way or not, but I do see that that is a, that is not something that's gonna give a leg up to someone, that there is compromise in, in a lot of this. And I think that's where, in this time and, and that we're living in our country, there is no compromise. There is either one side or the other. I see this as an opportunity, um, at a, at a softer landing. Is it gonna, is it gonna be that way? Probably not, not for people that's hard, whose, their hearts are hardened or just wanna be mad about everything. But I see that as a softer landing. I can sell it as a softer landing to myself. I don't know if I can sell it to everybody else. I don't know about these folks out here, we've had discussions. I think, uh, there, there's a reason, Mr. Lane, that the three names are given and that we walked out of there and said we'd be happy with any name. So, I'm gonna, and, and there's a reason that Dr. C's group, the students, right? Doc, the students said they wanted Tyler in there because they're proud of where they live. I just think that this is an opportunity here, whatever y'all choose, either way, um, you can, you can do that. It's gonna be how you approach it, how you attack it, and, and, um, they're still blue, they're the Lions. You're still red, and you're still the Red Raiders. And there's a little bit of compromise in both of those.
I can piggyback on that a little. You know, what I wrote down is the Tyler High Lions, they were always the Lions, weren't they? And John Tyler Lions, and the history of all the, the great people that came through that school, you know, these other two names are fine, but it's almost like you're starting over, over there, and I'm not sure, I don't, I, I don't, I'm gonna lean on some of you John Tyler grads and people that represent that, those districts, but it seems to me like, uh, the pride that that school is known by statewide, to me, it's almost like they deserve their name back, the Tyler High name back. And, uh, I'm, you know, I don't feel slighted at all because I went to Robert E. Lee, that, that they are the Tyler High, but that's who they were. And we need to be big, big boys about that, and that's, um, if, if the board feels like the community would support that, it sure makes a lot of sense to me, um, to not totally wipe away, um, the great things and people who have gone to that school. It seems like the right thing to do.
I'm not a, I'm not a Tylerite by birth, but by choice. And so, when we came here, that was the conversation we heard, that Emmett Scott was closed down in the fall, and then Tyler High School was changed to John Tyler High School. So, I think the community that I represent would love to have Tyler High School back, that they would love to have, um, that name back. And it represents Tyler, and it represents what was for them. And so, um, you know, we didn't let Lee people get a chance to talk about their school and what they wanted. We can't make everybody happy. Everybody is not going to be happy. They're going to be mad as soon as we step out that door. You should've done this, you should've done that. Um, if they could throw something, they probably would. And so, um, our job is not to make everybody happy. Our job is to do what we think is best for our community and the districts that we represent. And so, um, you know, Tyler United, they not gonna be united all the time. They probably gonna be fighting some of the time. And, um, so, that was off my list from the beginning because that won't work. So, I think that Tyler High would represent, um, JT well. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, my opinion is, it's very similar. I'll be short. I, I agree that Tyler High would be the name to go back to. I think that would be appropriate because of the legacy associated with Tyler High as well. You know, I think that, you know, individuals that went to Emmett Scott and they went to Tyler High, they graduated from those two schools, Emmett Scott's not coming back. They have an alumni association, and I think that there would be appreciation for going back to a name that they did graduate from, uh, instead of coming up with a fourth name for that particular school. Uh, I think it's important that we, we do maintain as much legacy associated with the school as possible as we move away from the name of John Tyler. And I think that that would retain some of that. So, I, I'm, I'm in support of the Tyler High.
Could just amplify something Mr. Bergfeld said I, I agree with. You know, as a, as a Lee graduate, as a father of three recent Lee graduates and a currently student, I've had, and having represented a portion of the district that feeds into that school, certainly have greater confidence of kind of understanding, uh, what's likely to be acceptable or, or interesting in the community. For the naming of thirty-five, thirty-five Lyon Lane, I'd, I'd want to, A, well, primarily defer to really the two of you about the name for that school. I know we represent the whole school system, uh, but in terms of being able to be a good judge of what would be best received in that community since the committee submitted three names, I'd really defer to the two of you in terms of, of a particular name and then really the length of time you feel like you want, if you want, to get additional input. I just, personally, I'm in a different spot for weighing in on one campus versus another.
Okay.
I, uh, I think it's prudent, I think it's responsible. I think, um, it is Tyler High School. I think that, that, to me, that's, that's what it needs to go back to.
All right. I do think there's been a very clear, uh, I have a very clear understanding of where everybody is on this. Are there any other comments before I entertain a motion, uh, for thirty-five, thirty-five Lyon Lane to be, um, changed back to Tyler High School? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and, sorry, Mr. Newsom.
No, I was just gonna make the motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion there.
Okay. I move that we change the school that's located at thirty-five, thirty-five Lyon Lane to the name of Tyler High School.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it, six-one, and, uh, John Tyler is going back to Tyler High School. And I'm just gonna comment, uh, I wish, that, that was such a good conversation. I mean, I, it really was, in my opinion. I wish the rest of the nation could see how you can sit down and just talk about things and, and come to a consensus. I'm proud to work with all of you, and, um, it's one part I love about this board. So, uh, we do have other items to talk about, believe it or not, on the, uh, agenda today. And, um, the next one is, uh, the discussion of board expectations and guidance regarding transitions and logistics related to the selected names of our comprehensive high schools.
Before I get started, let me, um, segue into that. Thank you for making a decision. Y'all employ me as a superintendent of schools. I can juggle a lot of things at one time, and I'm fine with it. If y'all would've taken another three months, four months, five months, another year to do this, it's our staff that I'm worried about more than anything. So, thank you for making the decision today to go ahead and move forward so that we can get moving towards the transition process, but more importantly, opening our schools in an unprecedented hundred-year issue. So, thank you for that. And I understand your, your concerns about where y'all were, what y'all were talking about, but you two, uh, Mr. Washman, I second that, that it's what this board is put together for. It's why you're elected officials, and, and you make decisions sometimes that are not comfortable and sometimes are comfortable. And, uh, you made a, you made a decision today, so thank you for go ahead and moving forward on that. I appreciate that. That's why this board was one of the top five honor boards in the state of Texas, because you make decisions, you move on. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Loper, Mr. Priest, Ms. Newsom. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Loper, Mr. Priest, Ms. Newton, to come sit at the table so we can have a discussion, um, I don't have anything presented for y'all or anything written out about, and it may take five minutes, it may take fifty minutes, I don't know, but I wanna have a discussion with y'all to see what your thoughts are in regard of the transitioning of this, because, I'll revert back to what I, um, said earlier about, how do you know y'all aren't gonna need that microphone, Rojo? How do you know that y'all aren't gonna need that? Okay, all right, um, so in saying that, y'all just don't wanna, y'all just wanna be there talking while we're talking. Um, I, what I'll say is, and when we talked to Northeast ISD, when they went through it, it really did take about a year to transition through it, not on purpose, it's just things came up and surprised them, now I think we got a little bit better handle, because we got two brand-new schools that are, that are being, um, constructed right now, so, um, and we purposefully, we're sensitive to that, plus I don't look at every school as needing to be looking like a pep rally when you walk into it. Um, the old days, the, the sixties and the seventies and eighties, you're gonna have red and blue everywhere, um, you're gonna have Lions and Red Raiders emblazoned everywhere, but you go to school, you, you go to school to, to learn, and then the athletic areas and the extracurricular areas and the fine arts areas, that's where you stick your stuff, so, we've been purposely doing that, plus there's a little different technology now that allows you to maybe put wall wraps on something instead of an actual mural in terrazzo or little tiles, uh, like, like a lot of, a lot of older schools might've had, and that was some of the things that you hear about whenever you go through this process, is busting up flooring with older logos in it that may not be, um, that they may not match to, to what the, um, you know, the school's name is or the mascot, so, that's what we're talking about today, we've also got construction, we've got fine arts, and we've got, um, athletics as well, and they're just gonna give you a little bit of a snapshot of, a, a little refresher about what it would take in some of the areas that they're responsible for to transition into, um, the, the names that y'all have chosen today, and so, um, I guess we'll just go and start with Ms., Mr. Loper, and then the board can certainly ask questions during this time, obviously, at your meeting, and, uh, we'll kinda go from there, so, Mr. Loper, let's, let's start out with, uh, the construction process, I, whichever school you wanna choose, um, you can start out with, and that way we can kinda give the board a little bit of a preview about what it might take.
Okay. Can y'all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to kinda recap, I'm gonna start with Tyler Legacy, and, um, to recap what we've already shared with the board here a few weeks back, as far as replacing the GFRC, if y'all recall, the simulated cast stone, so we had mentioned that we could possibly do three panels instead of all six, 'cause three panels housed the high school lettering, and it was a, a cost, it was, it was basically to do, to get that done, to get it to the architects, to get the shop drawings done, and then to get the panels manufactured at that point was twelve to sixteen weeks, which would put us, if I start that process today, would put us right in to November, to end of November, to actually have it, and then our thoughts were, at that point, to schedule that during the Christmas break, it'd take three to four weeks to do the installation, which means it would run past the Christmas break, though, that would be helpful as far as, uh, a good timeline to, to get this done. Uh, so, uh, if we changed out three panels, if you recall, it was a cost of around a hundred and two thousand dollars, and if we changed out all six, it was a cost of around approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So either way to do that, I will have to come back to the board, or we should come back to the board with a change order that you would have to approve at that point, once those costs are really completely finalized. Keep in mind, um, the, of course, the manufacturer recommends changing all six, just because of the color, possible color variation, because we have some age on the existing panels now. We really believe that we could replace three, and even if we had to re-stain the front to make it match, we believe that's possible. Um, the other, so at Tyler High, I guess, do y'all have any questions on that process? Tyler Legacy?
There was some question about the number of letters impacting the number of panels that needed to be changing, how much would fit, have you looked at, at that to see if Tyler Legacy fits into the Robert E. Lee space, or, or whether it's, it throws the alignment off, or?
Yes, sir, great question, yes, we have, and we believe that it will fit in the three panels and in the square footage and linear footage of the existing Robert, Robert E. Lee lettering.
It's negligible on the differentiation on that, it's pretty close.
What about the font size? Are we gonna have like a little?
We would keep it the same font as high school, in, in the same font that we currently have all the way around the building.
In the same size, right?
Yes, sir.
If you're not gonna have, okay.
Yes, sir.
I've got one general comment, is, um, I hope we will use as little taxpayer money as we can on this entire transition, so for every, I won't have to say that with each one of you, but, um, we have made it this long with the names that we've had, we voted, we did our duty, but let's not waste taxpayer money getting this process done, I think we should be as efficient as we can, still honoring what we've agreed to do, but not, not abusing it.
I agree, Mr. Bergfeld, that's a real concern, um, the, and your comments focused exclusively on replacing the GFRC, you and I've had the conversation, I know we've had the conversation, really can't read that from very far away, it looks nice as you walk into the building, I get that, but, um, I do think we should consider, and I know you've expressed concerns about our other school, Tyler High School, I'll start using the new name now, um, a, as it relates to visibility, and so, um, I, I think as you, as you laid out to the board the options, um, filling in and adding some metal letters or some other signage, to the extent that that looks good, um, certainly is much more visible, uh, signage, and is ultimately less expensive than replacing three or six tiles as well. Do you have, or, or do you have, or do you have a preference, I mean, or is it your recommendation that we go back to the GFRC, or should we consider other, would you like, how open are you to other options, I guess, uh, for signage?
My professional opinion is that we go back with replacing the GFRC, I, I think we're taking a risk at doing anything else would be basically, in my opinion, a Band-Aid, and, and, you know, if we went in and, and filled in and grouted in, um, as I mentioned in the past board meeting, there's, the, the manufacturer will not guarantee that, uh, and over time, it could, you know, because it's sealed, and, uh, we have to get the sealer off of the lettering to, to grout it in, I just, I just feel like that, um, it's not the proper and most highly qualified thing that we should be doing to that building.
And I do, I, I agree, Mr. Loper, I think what I was talking about more was, let's not spend twenty thousand covering over the letters that are up there and then replacing them in November, so that was, I wanna do it right, we need to do it right.
And at Tyler High, it would be the same thing, we would, we would wanna take out the brick where every brick has been penetrated for the standoff letters, and put new brick back in place like it was never there, and then put our new Tyler High School.
Darker letters.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that, that was my comment.
And maybe even, maybe the font a little bit larger as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that was my concern in regards to, since we're doing this anyway, we're gonna remove possibly three panels, if we can possibly go ahead and change the coloring of the letters so it's more visible from a distance, as opposed to once you get on the campus right up to it, I think that would be beneficial as well if we're gonna do this, okay?
Um, one thing I will comment on, uh, because I know cost has been a, a question about this, so, uh, there's, there is a fundraising effort that's going on out there in regard of that, it seems to me that that should target the, the signage, because cloth is, is gonna go through a, a normal cycle, we've talked about this before, um, in regard of that, and so I would encourage those that are contributing to that to hurry up, let's get that done, 'cause I do not recommend that we use bond money to redo this.
Okay, that was my concern.
That goes against our, our philosophy in Tyler to, you know, we've been very protective of the, the, of the debt service side of how we do things, and I think if we go back there and we redo it with that, um, I think that that would be something that's, that's oppositional to what we've always done here in regard to our facilities.
Okay, I understand that, but, but we're talking about saving money possibly, and if we do have excess money in the bond issue, which is already approved, that we have it there, you know, I have no problem personally using it, I'm, I'm very conservative when it comes to money, as is my wife. Uh, but, uh, I, you know, that's, that's my concern in regards to it, I know some people may be opposed to using the bond money, but it's money that we already have, and I know in the previous months, like I mentioned before, in this, with Mr. Loper management, we've been able to save a lot of money, enough to be able to expand those campuses, adding additional rooms and buildings, et cetera, so, you know, if we have that money that's already available and allotted for it, I have no problem with using it personally, I think that we should, but it's solely up to the board as to how we use it and what we do with it. Uh, the fundraising issue, I think that that's a, a concern, I know that, I've heard things in the community in regards to individuals raising funds, uh, can you address that in more detail, or would you rather not at this time?
I don't know anything about it, I just know that it's out there, it's somewhere upwards of seventy K right now, I guess.
So, in regards to the utilization of the money that possibly somebody will collect, how would it be utilized in paying for these changes in the district?
Well, I think that what would happen is, the board would have to accept a donation from whatever group that provides that, I think it's the East Texas Community Foundation that's managing that right now.
Okay.
And so, just like any other donation, you pull that item out of a board meeting and accept that, and Tasha would, once that is received from us, the CFO would then utilize that money to bump over to facilities so that they can actually use those dollars to do some of the remodel, um, of the signage, so, that's, that's all I'm saying, is that that maybe that's something the board can consider, it's a recommendation, y'all can go up or down on that recommendation, but I think that that would be a good use of the donations that were, that are specifically out there right now, uh, towards the change, and I think that's, it was created because of that, so that would be a, again, something I think that would kind of fit in line with what we've done, I agree with you that Mr. Loper and, uh, Ms. Bjork have done a, an incredible job over the last twenty years in, in managing that stuff, and we've typ- typically tried not to buy air conditioning, uh, with debt, unless it's a new construction, we've tried to not do parking lots with debt money, buses, we've gone over all that before, everybody knows what those three cents on our MNO side of our tax rate is used for, and that preventative maintenance, and so, you know, debt service, taking on debt means that we're, we're financing that years out, that's, that's, that's just all I was saying, was that, we, we understand that there's construction money there, but I think it would be, uh, a, a good strategy, almost an olive branch, to those that did not want this to happen, to say that we could potentially utilize that money specifically targeting it as much as we can, we may not get there, but as much as we possibly can there. What makes up that gap is gonna be your MNO money, that means I may not have to hire a, I may not get to hire another position or two next year because we're trying to get through this process as well, so, um, and I don't think we need to use bond money on, you know, on cloth, uh, or, or purchasing of uniforms or anything else, and I know you weren't going there, but I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that.
No, I, I don't know, I'm just asking questions, I'm trying to be educated.
I know, I know.
Okay, in regards to money coming in from the community, therefore, that money that we collect from the community would offset the total cost for the district that anyone that's willing to contribute, right?
Yeah, that's, again, the East Texas Communities Foundation is the one that's managing that, it's, it's not a district-managed fundraiser.
I understand.
It was purposely set up over there for them to manage that, that at one time, if, if, if the decisions were made, that they would actually donate that money back to the district, and then y'all can decide, well, actually they'd donate it for the purpose of the transition, um, and then y'all would accept that, and then we kinda use that as, as going through there.
Have they already donated, or are they going to donate?
Right now, I don't, I'm assuming that that's, that was the whole purpose of this, is that when, when the board did vote to do that, that the East Texas Communities Foundation actually, that triggered the actual startup of the donations.
Okay.
They've been accruing that over time, um, and they have not donated that, that yet to the school system, that'll actually come in front of the board to accept, um, once they do that, and knowing the folks that manage the, um, the East Texas Communities Foundation, they're not gonna hold on to that, they're gonna actually do that eventually, um, from my conversations with them.
We can go forward, I have additional questions.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that I also saw where, you know, maybe some of the faith-based entities had thrown out there that, you know, if they all gave, you know, X amount with as many of those as we have in this TISD, that, um, that that would help raise a lot of money, and I would encourage them to do that, if that's something that, if there's any pastors watching, uh, right now, and that your heart's led to do something, this would be a big help for this board, so that we could have the funds needed without going into our, the taxpayer budget, so, I'm at, making an official request right now, for anybody who wants to help us, this would be a good place.
Mr. Loper, one other question, so, if we look at the cast stone, and, and I affirm, Ms. Bergfeld, and your desire, we wanna have excellent-looking schools.
Absolutely.
Bolter has some paint, or in their, in, in their signage, you have the similar material as you have at Three Lakes, and you have at Moore, so it looks like it's cast stone up there, they actually have some paint, it looks like, in their letters, inside the part that's kind of carved out, so that it's more visible from the street, is that something that you've considered in these campuses to help with the visibility issue?
I haven't actually considered that in, for this campus, I mean, um, I guess on the other end at Three Lakes, we have it, just like it is at, uh, Tyler Legacy now, and, I'm, I'm trying to remember Bolter, I, I know that you're correct, but I believe what they did is, is stain the very inside of that engrave, or, or recessed lettering, that it did stand out, um, we can certainly consider that, if, uh, if the board certainly desires to do that. It would be, I mean, if you do it on the front, do you go ahead and do it over the media center, do you do it at the theater, do you do it at the dining hall, so?
Certainly, I don't think this is something that rises to board action, board decision, I'm really just asking questions to understand kind of your plans, and not advocating that we...
We'll, we'll, we'll certainly look at some different options on that.
Certainly can do that.
I don't think you, inside the media center, the theater, the dining area, when you walk up on those, you're gonna see it.
Yeah.
When you drive fairly close enough, what we're talking about is road frontage, storefront, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, visibility from the road.
So we'll, we'll see what we can come up with that might provide a little bit of, of, uh, differentiation on that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think that that's important, we also have the, they're putting big names, I think you're putting a name, big name out in front of Tyler High now, uh, next to the road, which helps people with poor vision, uh, see those things, but I, but I still think that, you know, the lettering would be better if it was darker, but, so, at least I could tell what the school, I will know where the school is from the highway now with the sign out next to the highway.
I agree, I agree with you.
I'm a fan of a tempered approach, uh, efficient approach, where we, you know, uh, as Andy referred to, maybe, uh, live with a couple things until we can get to them and do them right, I think consistency is important, um, and, you know, uh, we do have new schools, and they need to look new, not like they've already been, you know, remodeled in some way, you know, although, Mr. Loper, you're re- Although, Mr. Loper, your, your remodels look like they're new. I'll commend you for that, um, all over town. So, um, I'm just, I want to be as efficient with our taxpayer money as possible and, uh, knowing that we're gonna get this done. And, uh, anyway, does, does anybody else have any other comments or questions regarding, uh?
Well, facilities, but we've also, while those are not easy, we have a little bit more experience in that. The, the difficult stuff's gonna be over here, um, with your, you know, and what your preferences are and kind of what our strategies are gonna be as we go forward with, uh, extracurricular activities. Cause that's where a lot of your other logos and brandings are located. So I think for five minutes, maybe we can talk about that. I mean, I'll get it started real quick. Um, Ms. Newton, the board purchased new uniforms for the Big Blue Band at Tyler High this year. Um, there is nothing on there that, that has any type of name or, or former lettering that would, that would suggest the form, the, the former name of the school. So we caught that ahead of time. It was on schedule. This was the year, actually it was a year by, a year back, but they are here. Legacy is up next year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is that in this budget cycle, Tasha? So it's, it's gonna be included in this year's budget whenever she goes over here next year? So we'll be able to do that. Um, right now, the uniforms do have a little bit of a stencil on there. Not stencil, but a stitching, um, of, of the, the letters of the, of the, of Legacy's former name. God, it's gonna be weird over time. Um, it says R E L on it. So in saying that, those are just some of the things that we're having to discuss. We've talked about it. Do you put a patch over it now? Do you, do you figure out a way to, this year possibly not have a top that goes with it? Um, and just use the pant bottom? Or is it all, is it a jumpsuit?
Uh, no, it's a separate pants.
It's separate, okay, okay. So just kind of talk about that and then I'll obviously segue into Coach Priest.
Well, um, as we stated, the John, the Tyler High School uniforms have been replaced and they don't have any of the naming on it. The Tyler Legacy uniforms are up, but things look a little bit different for the 2021 school year. And so both campuses will probably be wearing an alternate uniform due to some safety concerns with COVID-19. So both campuses typically when it's warmer, whether they wear the marching bands, wear a tee shirt and shorts when they're out on the field and marching even at halftime games, that's tradition, uh, or that's regular practice everywhere. Um, the change this year is as opposed to wearing the uniform, they're gonna wear a nice jacket with, um, either khakis or jeans as the weather gets a little bit cooler. So the uniform really becomes non-issue this year because we are doing an alternate, um, uniform. Both of those jackets will take into consideration the new naming and the logo. So when the new uniforms are replaced, they would be replaced with the new name or not have the name on it at all, just a logo. Which seems to be the style right now for marching uniforms is not to put the name, but to put the logo that's associated with the school.
What, what kind of jacket are you talking about?
A nice jacket.
Like a blazer?
We could go shopping at Harleys or, 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 or what? I mean, what?
I know, really.
More of a, a puffy style jacket.
A what? A puffy style jacket?
Not super puffy, not like a Back to the Future.
Sucking like N'Sync here or?
Not the Back to the Future Life Preserver kind of thing. Um, uh, more of a, I don't know how really to describe it. It's a, you've seen it too, Dan.
Like a, like Dan, like that vest that he likes to wear sometimes, like a little puffy, like almost a waffle tight? What is it? What is, what is, what does it look like?
It's yes.
It's under-armed, but just a little more insulation.
It's got a little insulation to it, not a lot of the.
Okay.
Yes.
Those can be used in the future as well?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
And the students will purchase them.
Okay.
In all likelihood. It'll be a part of their band fees.
Okay.
One thing to clarify real quick that I think is obvious is we're keeping our mascots. So media, if anyone's wondering, we're, the mascots will stay the same for the two high schools. We're all, yeah. Um, okay. So my, my personal opinion is if you have a little R E L on a collar or something of a uniform and you have to go to one band performance somewhere, I'm, I mean, that's not, I mean, I don't think we go spend a bunch of time and effort, you know, ridding three initials off a uniform for one year. Um, that's just my opinion on, on the subject. So I appreciate you doing everything you can to make the transition, but if we end up, you know, in a little, little bind like that, no one's gonna get hurt.
It is marching, it is contest year, right?
So far.
So far? For both high schools or just?
No, it's just for six A.
It's for six A this year, right? So they're not gonna come back on us and change their COVID preferences on how to uniform? If we get a chance to go marching regionals or, or state, I mean, we're, we're.
I don't anticipate that because there are most of several of the marching bands within our region are looking alter, at alternatives.
And like Mr. Bergfeld said, depending on what the preference of the board is, if we had to bust out the old ones just for contest, we, we could do that, I guess, right?
Yes.
Board, are y'all, I know you can't stick your hand up in the air on this question, but are y'all okay with that?
Do some students have problems with wearing uniforms with the lead name on it and all that? So will that still be an issue?
I don't know. Maybe we can figure out a way to, only do it for the ones that do have an issue.
Or, or black them all out with a, I mean, if it's, if, if the base of it's black and the lettering's either silver or red or, it's red.
We'll figure something out.
You get a black marker, honestly, it blends in with the deal. I mean, that's, that's cheap, but I'm, I'm with whatever. I mean, uh, the rest of the board is on this.
And you've already gone over some of your strategies on your music, on your sheet music and on your casings, et cetera. Any other big items, like any wraps on vehicles, booster clubs, things like that that?
So the wraps on the, um, Robert E. Lee trailers, excuse me, Tyler Legacy trailers.
You can say legacy, by the way.
Okay.
Cause in town, everybody knows from Tyler.
Okay, so the Legacy trailers, um, those were, are scheduled to be wrapped, rewrapped anyway. With the new branding and the new logo, those were scheduled to be rewrapped anyway.
Okay.
Um, Tyler High School has received, is getting a trailer and is in the process of being wrapped. So that became really non-issue also. It was a really good time for V P A because first of all, it hits before a lot of things were purchased and then the rotation of replacement of things, it's a, it's timing is a little less expensive for us right now than, than maybe at a different time. Um, as far as the music is concerned, uh, I think a lot of the music we purchase, have purchased or continue to purchase aren't stamped with the school name on it. Some of it's digital, so it's digitally cataloged, which if it's digitally cataloged, it's not stamped with the name on it anymore. Um, the pieces of music that do wanna continue to, we do wanna continue to use, we can just put a sticker over those, um, if necessary, if that's what the board would like to do. To replace all that music really, you know, I don't, that's up to you what you would like to do there. As far as, and then we had the music stands and chairs and, um, those were replaced when the schools were redone. So those have not been branded with the school name on them and I would recommend not doing that. Um, so, you know, other than a few things that we may find along the way, I really don't anticipate any large expenses associated with V P A.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for V P A? Okay, moving on to athletics.
A little trickier with athletics here. Um, we know you're gonna do whatever it takes to make this happen. So let's just kind of get a general philosophy, a strategy of how you're gonna go about it, Coach Priest.
Well, I've kind of put, I've gone to all the head coaches and just asked them to provide me with, you know, what they currently have and what they're gonna issue out as far as practice gear and game, game apparel, all the way from varsity down to the subarts of the ninth grade team. And so, so I'm collecting all that information of what has, John Tyler still has. I, I, I do not think, very few items have Robert E. Lee on them anymore, mostly if it's gone to Tyler Lee. So, uh, so I think it will definitely help, maybe getting some guidance from, uh, of what will be acceptable. I know the T L definitely does help. Um, but before that, on some of our, you know, the, our schools, our teams were using T. Uh, so is that going to be acceptable? Cause I think that will save us a lot as well. Uh, you know, so a lot of baseball and maybe even basketball had, had tag backs or down on the side of the shorts. So th- those things, if we're able to use, continue to use the T, um, that will definitely help us. Um, I, I look at volleyball bought a brand new uniform and it was ordered in the early spring. Uh, and it has Tyler Lee on the back. Uh, I, I think all of their jerseys, most of them have Raiders on the front and then Tyler Lee across the back. So we're, we're going and looking at, at taking those to, uh, different places in town to try to get that covered up. The, the one thing is, you know, as, as we all do, we want it to look great and, and not like we're, I know we want to save money, but we need it to look really well whenever we, when we're out representing our, our schools. So, um, we're gonna try to do our best to keep our costs down. I know I mentioned that, you know, most of our, our traditional jerseys, when you're a home jersey, you have the Lions and you have the Red Raiders. So we'll just have to make adjustments to do that. Uh, but we are gonna have some. I mean, more of them have popped up than what I thought, uh, that did have John Tyler or Tyler Lee on it. There are several, and several of the John Tyler schools have had J T. Uh, so I, I mean, I think just getting some guidance from you guys on what is acceptable. Uh, you know, cause it's, it's everything from backpacks, you know, that we've got some backpacks that you weren't thinking about that they gave, gave out that had, uh, that had the T or T L or J T, uh, things like that. So I, I think any of what, maybe getting some feedback from you guys on what you really want replaced.
Deck coach, for the swimmers, you brought that up at the swimming pool.
Yeah, we had the, and that's the.
Are those stitched on?
They're stitched in. That's soccer, that is soccer and, uh, and swim. But, but I think we can get those covered up. I, I'm not as concerned maybe about the jackets. I know we want to go look at it. I'm, I, I think we can do that very well. I think they can, they feel confident that they can get that and it'll look okay. Better than okay. It, it'll look where you can't really tell. It's the jerseys on the back where it was sublimated, where it's, that you're gonna try to cover it up. Um, and if it's kind of a faded jersey, but we'll, we'll make do.
About other equipment, like? I mean, everything's decal. We don't have anything, any decals that, I mean, that we had on that, but.
We've got the.
Wraps on, on travel trailers, et cetera, et cetera.
We have the, the one trailer that is the elephant in the room for me is the athletic trainers trailer. And that has Robert E. Lee on it and, uh, is, it does not look good and it is, it is, it's the bed truck liner is what it has been sprayed with. So there's not a lot you can do to change it. And so you either sandblasts it off. If I go do that, that's more than the trailer. So, uh, so I'm, I'm better off going and buying a new trailer. So I'm.
I know Tyler High's got a couple of pool trailers they've also got that have been wrapped.
Yes. So we'll, I, I haven't, I, I know those were recently done. While they go back and do, change any of those that were done. Uh, the, the good thing is, is that, I mean, you, you mentioned it a while ago, and I think in town, it's gonna be Legacy. When we go out of town, it's gonna be Tyler Legacy. Uh, J T, uh.
Just Tyler.
What I'm saying is it, for J T, even though it was John Tyler, U I L has always referred to them as Tyler. So when we make the playoffs, it's Tyler High. Uh, it kept that. So I think that will be a smooth transition for outside of Tyler. So I, you know, I feel, I feel okay. Uh, i- i- it is a little stressful, but trying, trying to figure out in, in a short. But the best thing about it is with the modification of the U I L, of the U I L calendar, it gave us a month, you know, a little over a month to try to, to try to get some things done that I didn't think we were gonna be able to pull off. Uh, I, I do think we will be able to use, my goal is to use budget money. I, I do not wanna, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out and be creative, but we'll also be able to use our budget money. You know, Dr. Crawford has been gracious enough to athletics and, and, uh.
The board.
And the board. Well, I'm just saying. Excuse me. Yeah, you, you guys have been gracious. Uh, and I, and I appreciate those things and us being able to, that, that I think we can accommodate some of these things and knock them off.
So you're asking for some guidance from the board. Is there any we can give today? Like, like the, the T. The T doesn't have anything to do with Lee. It's not like it says Lee on it. It's a T. So, you know, things like that, are we comfortable when, you know, wearing a T or having a T until it's time to replace that? You know, if that's six months or a year or two years, um, you know, or can we give some guidance there? And that same with the, if there's a little J T on a uniform, you know, did you say there was?
Like our, I, I think men's basketball used that a lot. Uh, it would have a basketball with a J T in it. And so that, you know, that would, that would be practice uniforms and then J T on a lot of their game uniforms. It just has a J T, uh, right in the center. Those are, you know, and I, that's where I, that's where I need to know where we can go. Cause that will save us a lot.
To me, there's a difference between a little J T and Robert E. Lee in a rainbow across the side of a trailer. You know, um, that's just me personally. I, I just want to use common sense if there's a opportunity to in this.
Yeah, I concur. I mean, um, taking our time to minimize the expense and distinguishing between small marks and large marks. I think those are things that certainly minimize the expense and maybe simplify the transition for you. I certainly support both those things.
I agree as well. I, I think that we do have to consider the, the students' input because that's part of the reason we're here, I think. Uh, it's because of the students. So I think that maintaining the T, um, either one of the schools, in the, either one of the schools' names would be sufficient. Anything other than that, uh, I think there may be a problem with when it comes to the student's position. So I, I think that it's important that we, if we can, uh, agree that we can accept the T, uh, being covered up or however you wanna eliminate the other, uh, letters from being exposed. But, uh, making sure that we do address that concern from the student's perspective.
Would, could you, uh, I think I understand what you're saying and I could agree. Like if there's a student that doesn't want, that's, you know, can't participate with, unless there's a change, that student can have the opportunity to have something done, um, so they can compete? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I, I think yes, that's true. And I think it's the student responsibility. I think it becomes our responsibility to do that. Uh, addressing the concern that we've gone this far, if we're gonna do it, we make sure that we do it the right way. Uh, because that's the whole reason we're here now. It's because somebody felt like they were forced to, to wear something that they didn't feel like they wanted to. So I think that we need to neutralize that as much as possible and, uh, stick with just maintaining maybe the T as opposed to any other letters associated with it at this point. Or in, in the case of, uh, Legacy, you, T L. You know, but I think if you, you're gonna maintain the J, uh, with John Tyler, I think that once again, there are people that wanted that change. So, uh, I don't know how many students within the school wanted it changed, but the community wanted it changed. So in that case, we be sympathetic to their position. And, uh, we try to maintain the T and eliminate the other letters if there is any problem, so that we stay as neutral as possible in regards to it.
And my comments were only for the short term. It wouldn't be maintaining it.
Oh, yeah. Long-term, long-term, they all be eliminated.
Yeah.
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 And I'm not so sure with so much of controversy with wearing John Tyler's uniform. I thought the students had trouble wearing Lee's uniform because John Tyler was the second thought of changing the school name after we talked about Lee. So I'm not so sure how, I'll have to find out. I'm not so sure how they felt because I hadn't heard no one complain about JT's.
Well, I, I think we responded in regards to the community's input regarding John Tyler. So from that perspective, we changed the names of both schools. So therefore, we need to be consistent in responding to the community's input when we address either one of the schools. And that's my reason for saying that. You know, because there are people out there that felt like it was important to change the name of John Tyler. Therefore, they feel like it's important that we address their concerns. And I think in doing so, if we can stay as neutral as possible, we will address their concerns.
Right. Well, we can. That was the key word, when we can say as neutral as possible.
Yeah, I think if I were to prioritize it, I would do the same thing, just sensitivity to students first.
Yeah.
But, you know, people know this happened fast. I think everyone's reasonable and knows that we're going to work our way through trailers and logos and whatever else we're doing. I think people all understand if they see something driving around with R E L. But certainly a sensitivity to students for sure would be something I would prioritize.
In terms of principles, it seems like coming from the board, there's no appetite for some sort of rapid, complete transformation that was going to be very expensive in replacing everything that had any mark on it whatsoever. It doesn't seem like there's any appetite for people, for us to take that position. There seems to be some difference between a major mark and a minor mark, things that are big versus things that are small. And then the other option that has been discussed is, is there some sort of individual accommodation on a minor mark that might make sense for a student who, who would object?
And you may ask a student and they may say, you know what? I know the process is ongoing and it's, y'all are doing the best you can. I'm not worried about it. The decision's been made. Thank you for, you know, what, what you've done. So there might be a part of it where the administration, you know, gauges if there's an issue or not before we create one.
Absolutely. We've, we've heard your comments today and we will remediate and accommodate as appropriate.
Yeah, and that big block, that red T, you know, that's been used a lot and, and it's synonymous with Legacy right now. And, and I think there's a very difference in between a big block red T and a bit, big block blue T as well. I mean, you know, you know, and, and we're looking at an odd year, if there's any year to be going through this, you know, and, and where you're going to have a little grace. I think it's the 2021 school year for sure. So our expectations, I believe, are, you know, to do this as efficiently as possible and where issues arise, we address them. And I think the board's been fairly clear on what we want.
I, I agree. I think that if we can get recommendations from each one of the individuals in regards to suggestions, it would kind of guide us because we have no idea of everything that needs to be changed. So if somehow they can make recommendations of things that need to be changed, I think that would help us a lot more than just trying to blanketly think of everything. So if each one of the individuals can, can do that, so submit recommendations, then we can feel like we've covered everything as thoroughly as possible in such a short period of time. I think that coming from them, it would be much better than us trying to sit here and think about things that we may have missed when they are the ones that actually have the, the knowledge.
We're not going to miss anything.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping we won't, but I, I would, you know, so...
We didn't know a timeline about what the expectations were. If you were telling us we had to get this done before August 19th, then that was something we would have to rush to go do. Or September 24th, whenever your first football game is or your first volleyball game is, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, that's, that's kind of what we're going. I'm, I'm going to ask y'all to, do you want us to change the little logo on here? We'll, we'll take care of that. I mean, we, we understand where we're going with this thing. We just kind of wanted a little bit of, again, I think Wade used that as grace. The symbolic things have been done from the board dies, in my opinion. And, and so we're going to work our way through that so that we don't make a mistake fiscally for more than anything, whenever we can do some things a little bit differently too. So absolutely, I mean, we, we can do an accounting of the things that we do take care of. That's all I'm asking of this bunch. And then if y'all want to look at that later on, you possibly can.
Sounds like a plan. The words fiscal and accounting are a perfect segue into our next agenda item.
I got one more group that I'd like to speak with. Can y'all get up? And then Mr. Lane?
Where did Dr. Seagum?
He's hiding.
Oh, I didn't see you. Would y'all just come up here real quick? There, there's one other thing, just as, as we're trying to be transparent and we're going through this, there are some other adjustments that need to be done with things that you may, may or may not normally think about. And I'll just use Legacy's alma mater. What's your plan on that?
Well, once this decision was made, I'm going to be getting with Sam LaBordis and the band department and get together with Fine Arts, Sandy Newton, and look at how we can do that with the, an ease in transition and see how we can do that in a timely manner, but still make sure we take that into account as we go through it.
With the existing tune?
Correct, sir. Yes. With the existing tune and try to fit names that would be appropriate in regards to the name of our school.
Okay.
Anything else from either one of you guys that you can think of off the top of your head that's in similar issue with, with what I just brought up?
The only other thing I would think is in regards to as we get ready for graduation and diplomas, diploma covers, things of that nature. But those usually, and historically, have had the front of the campus on those diploma covers and on, in some way, shape or form, on the diploma in the background. But since we have a new campus anyway, we were already working toward designing that as well. So there's nothing as far as graduation announcements, nothing of that nature. This is in time for us to be able to have that.
A lot between now and May.
Yes.
Mr. Lane, anything that you can think of?
Ours are small things. I mean, I'm wearing one of the lanyards that say John Tyler on it. And we found out that was about $5,000 to change that over because we were ahead of game ordering those. I think we have a cheered warm-up jacket that says John Tyler on the back of it. I mean, we don't have to wear the jacket and it's just a handful of girls, I think 20 girls. So...
If they've, if they've purchased it, because I'm daddy of two girls and know that that cheer stuff is expensive, I think we can, if it's cold and that's their jacket, I think we're okay with that.
Okay with purchasing it or okay with wearing it?
Have we already bought it?
There are, I guess so.
Yeah. So I think that that's some of the things that we've talked about here that we have to, because this did happen in such a hurry, don't want a cheerleader on the sideline.
And playing in January, we, we may see those jackets a little bit more than we might normally.
So hopefully the community will understand and give us some grace in regard to that. And then in future years, we'll do the best we can.
We have very few things that we found that have John Tyler on them, a lot of JT.
Yep. Alma mater?
I have not visited that yet, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. But those little things right here, they'll be collecting stuff and documenting that about the things that they're having to adjust as well. So we want to make sure that we're taking care of those things and showing the board that we are taking care of those things from the campus level as well, outside of facilities, VPA and athletics. There are some quirky things that may be lying around that you need to take care of.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, I'd recommend anywhere, you know, Legacy replacing Robert E. Lee, you know, is a good start. Just, so, and it, it would fit right, right in there. And then as time moves on, as far as words go, if the students or whoever feel it necessary, I'm, I don't think anybody would be extremely opposed to, as long as the, I think the tune stays the same on, on both of those songs and you're able to stick your L in the air after the football game, you know, you still got Legacy and you still got Lions and, you know, and you have that tune. So thank you for, for your report. Any other comments?
I have a comment. Being a new board member, you know, I, I want to make sure that we take care of this issue this time so that they don't come back to haunt us again. And that's one of the reasons I'm being so thorough. You know, we've been here before. I don't want to come back here. And I want to make sure everything's taken care of to the best of our ability that we can. I, I think that it is a waste of our times to, to continually revisit things that we've already been at. So I, I think that it's important that we take care of this as thoroughly as possible to make sure that we do have the community input as much as possible so that we don't revisit it. I'm not one for going back to things. I like to finish it when it's given to me the first time and do it adequately. And so I, I think that we need to be as thorough as possible and making sure that we address this as thoroughly as possible from the community standpoint as well so that we don't come back here.
Sure. Thorough will be the key. It's the, it's the speed in which we can accomplish that.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Will be one thing that is probably going to wind up taking a little bit longer. If we can take care of things quicker, we will.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Just one last comment. It's unusual for our board to weigh in at this level of detail. And, and I, I hope, Dr. Crawford, you've gotten the guidance you need to where this isn't something that we have to revisit at the board level, that you've gotten the direction, the, the conservation of taxpayer resources, that importance, grace around an implementation throughout this year, accommodation for students who object to something with those principles. Are you comfortable that you've gotten the direction you need from the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just one other thing. We definitely want to thank you all for the work you put into this and for making a decision today because it does allow us to move forward and get a fresh start. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much so. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so next we have a budget update for the 2021 school year.
Yeah, Assistant Superintendent Finance Operations, Ms. Tasha Bjork will actually come to the table at this time to take the board through the August workshop, the budget. Done a lot of work up to this point and still reeling from a legislative session that put a, imposed a whole lot of new rules in regard to tax rates, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bjork and y'all can go through this process.
If you look in, on page eight of your agenda, the summary page, that has changed a little bit since the time, last time we looked at it. I think last time we had about a $5.9 million excess and at this point, we're sitting at $3.6 million to go towards either a stop-in for employees or COVID-related expenditures that we, that any, anything could come up as far as that's concerned. If you, page nine's the same, 10, 11, let me see. The next page that changed was on page 13 of the agenda. And I'd mentioned that we would have to buy more licenses for all the student devices and teacher devices that we purchased. And that is in the middle of the page on org 946, the 275,000 net that we're increasing the technology budget for the licenses and that type of thing. That's about all that changed on departmental budgets. Now, if you flip to page 15 on the revenues, I did some more work on some of these like interest income. The rates have bottomed out. They're, they've dropped a lot. And so I had to decrease that another 500,000. So it's a total decrease of $900,000 to the budget on that. And then athletic revenue, I feel like that's going to decrease. I cut it in half just based on the fact that the games I...
So officials' fees have gone up and then capacity limits are certainly something that's also we're having to contend with and just a general feel that there may be less folks just actually coming to the games anyways.
Yeah, I don't think I cut it in half. I cut, I cut about 65,000 off of it. Now, the important part that has changed is on page 16, and that's our levy, our tax rate levy. And the values that I presented to you last month were 6% increase. Well, based on protests and appeals and all that, right now, our estimate is 4.9%. And so that allowed us, the TEA set our tax rate. Well, I'm going to turn to page 17, the next page for that. So the new law said that we're limited to either the lower of the state compressed rate or our local compressed rate. And the state compressed rate was based on value increases of around 4.01%. And their rate was .9164. So it went from 93 cents this past year down to 91.64 cents. Well, our values were at 4.9%, so our compressed rate is lower than the state. It's .9091 cents. And then we can add our enrichment or golden pennies, which it's been four, but we have an option to add an extra penny this year. So I'm recommending we go for the extra penny because it means a million, 250,000 in state revenue plus the 900,000 in tax revenue. So that's 2.1 million of the three and a half that I had said we have excess. We are, however, decreasing the debt service tax rate by two pennies. And if you look on the next page, on July 23rd, we had our bond refunding. And I believe when Dusty presented to y'all in January, we were estimating a savings of 18 or 19 million. But if you'll look in the column that says savings, we actually saved over the life of the debt, $35.6 million, which equates to around a million five a year. And that means almost two pennies on the tax rate. So we're going to decrease the debt service rate, two pennies, and we are still decreasing the M and O total by a penny. So it'll be a decrease of three cents to taxpayers on our tax rate. So that's how the tax rate. Now, if you go to the last page, 19 in the agenda, the main changes on this page were the state funding. Previously, it was at 3.8 million. I've reduced our ADA by 1% because it's possible that we might lose that much due to COVID. We are held harmless if we drop below 1%, more than 1%. But I'd...
Just for, just for a couple of six weeks though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I did some reduction in our normal average daily attendance so that we would be very conservative on that because we don't want to get caught on that. And then our property taxes, last time I presented, were a $3 million increase. Now they're 3.4 million. And then just the athletic revenue, interest income. We had to increase our unemployment compensation. It kind of took us by surprise how many claims were filed. And hopefully that will improve as we start back to school. So we increased that about 250,000. And then the technology increase that I already talked about. So the bottom line is we have about 3.6 million that we can do stop-ins or reserve it for COVID-19 expenditures that might come up for cleaning supplies, transportation issues, that type of thing. Any questions?
Let me just say that it's unfortunate that the camera's packed up after we finished the name change discussion to not, to not cover the fact that we're proposing a three-cent tax reduction for the taxpayers of Tyler ISD. I'd applaud the conservatism of your, of approach, both on the revenue side, the fee side, and the expense side. I think we always, we recognize that our employees are... I think we always, we recognize that our employees are critical to the success of what we want to accomplish here and and being competitive with other school districts to compete for talent and compensation is one part of that. So I applaud your efforts to keep some money set aside for either unanticipated expenses related to the pandemic or to reward our great employees.
Reverend Hager, just as you're extolling greatness upon Tasha, we did just receive today that we are rated superior in regard to the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas that just came in today. So how many years in a row, Tasha?
However long they've had it.
Quit counting. It is going to get more difficult. They've changed the rules on that. And but at the same time, kudos to your staff and how you manage your the finances of the taxpayers too. I wanted to work the board on that.
I'd just like to come in as well. I think that you're doing an excellent job in regards to that. I have a question regarding the surplus that you made the recommendation to use the stipend for our faculty or staff COVID-19. That, you know, those things concern me quite a bit, both those aspects of it. And I think looking at something from to benefit our employees would be very beneficial. And I have some things that may come up later. But I was wondering, how do we use this money? Is it the board's discretion or is there recommendations or what do we do with it?
In regard to which portion of that you said?
Any of them. It's three point something million.
The excess. Well, I think it's just in the conservative nature that the work that we did in reorganizing the school system back in the spring in preparation for unanticipated fiscal challenges. At no fault of ours, obviously with the first reading, this came out again today. But that is possibly available for a mid-year stipend.
And it would come to you for approval.
And it would come to y'all for the approval.
We've done this one other time and we did it in around December and we brought it to the board for approval. And that's our goal. We don't want to have to spend it on COVID. We want to give it to them, please.
And per board policy, we've got to bring expenditures $50,000 or above to y'all. So obviously those are big chunks that are inside of that three plus million dollars that would need to come before y'all before we spend any of it.
Okay.
So so absolutely that that is some gives y'all a little bit of flexibility. It also gives you a little bit of flexibility in the future in regard to after the legislative session next year. So we've done the work to kind of carve out some of the headroom, for lack of a better term. If the legislature comes back and cuts public ed back another five billion or so like they did back in 2011.
Yes, we have some one-time items in this budget that we won't have to carry in the next year's budget, such as the band uniforms for legacy. And then we have some instrument purchases and kiln purchases. There are several things that we're buying in this budget that we'll be able to take out next year if we have to reduce.
Okay. Tough year to budget for. I know that. I know it's not fun making cuts when you have to. But appreciate you guys getting together and coming up with a with a good budget that we can all be proud of and lowering decreasing the total tax rate at three cents is a big deal. And I think the community will be proud of that. So any other comments or questions for Ms. Bjork? Okay. Thank you.
Need to stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we on our moving on to the action. Action item portion, you know, consider approval of a board meeting date for the purpose of adopting the budget and the proposed tax rate.
Yeah, this is part of the actual calendar that goes that's been provided to us by the legislature through TEA down to the local education agency, the different things that you have to go through as far as the the days out before we actually adopt that. And so today's the day we actually provide to the board the actual board meeting date that we're going to put in front of y'all, the recommendation to adopt the budget and then also the proposed tax rate as well.
It will be published in the paper Tuesday. The notice.
You're recommending Monday, August 24th? Dr. Crawford for the date.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's in your packet on page 20. That is Monday, August 24th of 2020, the proposed tax rate of $1.3041.
I move that the meeting date for the purpose of adopting the budget will be August and proposed tax rate will be August 24th, 2020.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. As have it. Motion carries. August 24th. Moving on, we're considering the approval of proposed budget and expenditures for state compensatory funds 2021 school year.
Another statutory requirement in your packet on page 21 for the board to review and allow the administration to go ahead and move forward on the state compensatory education. Remember how state compensatory education is developed? It's done on at-risk student populations that you have, among other factors. And they provide additional funding for you in regard to those programs, those that funding can be used towards those programs to assist the at-risk students.
It's part of the general fund budget that we went over, but they require us to adopt or to get approval on this separately.
Okay.
So there's a list of the different things that we do provide that with, everything from our early graduation slash credit recovery high school to JJAAP, AVID disciplinary alternative education program, summer programs like Rose City Summer Camps. And then technology devices for remote learning as well is allowable for that expense. There's also supplemental staff that's listed in your board packet that you can review that we do pay for out of state comp ed.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation on the proposed budget and expenditures for state compensatory education funds for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion carries. We're moving on to consider approval of the employee health insurance rate increase. Tasha, go ahead.
In looking at our health insurance plan, we need to raise the premiums about 10%. We went two years ago with no increase. Last year we raised it 5% and we need to raise it another 10 for this next year in order to keep the plan viable. And if you look at the page 25 in your agenda, we have compared our new rates to the TRS Active Care and we're still really, really competitive with them. Way lower, way lower premiums. If you look at Plan A, Employee and Family, it's $16,000 annually different. Plan B, Employee and Family, 7,500. And so on.
We don't really have much of a choice, do we?
You know, I wouldn't do it if.
I guess that's my question. Do we have a choice? You know, this is my first year on the board. You know, and I know insurance is very expensive for the employees, employers, as well as the employees. And I think that that's my major concern. I noticed the increase, you know, 5% last year, 10% this year, 15% in two years. That's a lot of money for individuals that on the lower end of the pay scale that's employed by TISD. 15% can be quite a bit of money. So and that's why I made the comment earlier about the excess funds. I think that it is a TISD administered plan. I think we need to look at somehow offsetting that cost to the employee.
We are putting money into it also.
Significant amount that we still have to put the 10% and the 5% increase each year?
We pay plus we pay per month, 225 per employee. In addition, we put two to three and a half million dollars additional each year into the plan.
Okay.
So we fund it with whatever, but we it's gotten really expensive.
Oh, yes, I know.
And I feel it's very important we keep our health plan.
Oh, yeah.
Because I would not want to turn our employees over to TRS Active Care.
Right. Oh, no, that's impossible. We couldn't afford that. We'd lose all our employees.
I'm always very conservative on this topic.
And I believe you are.
And we we've gone years where we haven't increased them at all. But due to rising costs and just the premiums I'm seeing and I mean the claims I'm seeing and we have a limit on with our current hospital provider.
Right.
That we don't have to pay over a certain amount, but that went up this year. And so we have to raise what we put in and what the employee puts in also.
Right. And I understand that. Now, I guess I'm just trying to get a whole concept of the operation and the health plan versus some of the other things that we have. So TISD administered plan, right?
Yeah, we're self-funded.
Do we do we make any money off the plan at all? No? We basically go in the hole in the red or?
We don't go in the red. That's that's why I do these type of things to try to keep it out of the red.
Okay.
But we have been able to be competitive on our rates in recruiting teachers.
Right.
And that type of thing. So we use this as a recruiting tool because very few districts are self-funded anymore. I think there's what, 20 or something like that? We've managed to keep ourselves self-funded.
Right.
Which I feel is a great benefit for our employees.
I agree 100%. I'm just looking at it from from an employee of the district that may make maybe 40,000. And I'm sure that there's some people in the district that make less than 40,000 that may be full-time that would need benefits. So I'm looking at it from their perspective in regards to the benefit package. And I know they always have an option of going with some plan outside of spouses' plan if there's some opportunity or et cetera. But I think that when we talk about benefits, I think that that is one of the things that you get concerned about in regards to what you're offering. I know you're talking about comparing it to TRS. TRS is ridiculous. You know, that that should be no comparison because no one that's making $40,000 could afford a TRS plan. And since we don't have a universal health plan that's adequate at this time, I think that we have to be considerate. I think that it's something that we should look extensively into so that it can be another attractive thing for attracting people to our district. I think that you've done an excellent job. I'm not I'm not knocking you. I'm just knocking the the system, I guess, in regards to insurance increases and everything.
Our lower compensated employees usually get the high deductible, which is the last one and the monthly premium's $102 a month. I know that's still a lot.
Yeah.
But but the bus drivers, the food service workers.
Right.
This is normally where they go.
Okay.
If we even cover them. A lot of them we don't cover. We only cover maybe half our employees.
Okay.
A lot of them go with their spouses.
Right. They have to manage that themselves. Right. Okay. I'm just, you know, I get real passionate about those things because being in healthcare for all those years that I was there and and, you know, seeing the disparities associated with individuals, you know, having access to it. It becomes a very, from my perspective, a very personal issue that I'm always concerned about. Making sure that people do have the opportunity to healthcare, affordable healthcare.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this before I entertain a motion? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then on item C.
I move that we approve the employee, the proposed employee premium rates for Plans ID and HD for the coming plan year.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Tasha. Now we're considering on item D, consider the approval to ratify Operation Connectivity in our local acquisition agreement with Region Four Education and Service Center.
Reflect the board back to Gina. When was that through the resolution? At the end of March, when we started getting this jam on COVID. The board gave the superintendent authority to enter into agreements with in response to this issue, to the issue that we do have here. So in front of you is an actual agreement with Region Four to participate in Operation Connectivity. Operation Connectivity is this push by the state, Texas Education Agency, along with other superintendents, working with legislators and congressmen for additional funding to get into the hands of those that may not have the connectivity that other parts of this country may have. And that could be anything from, you know, wireless access points to hotspots to other devices as well in regard to that. So we do appreciate with the the state coming forward. I think it's a it's a it's a.
We have to pay.
We got to pay half to do that. So we went and entered into that agreement, went to bring it in front of the board to ratify. The turnaround on that was July 7th. It started July 17th. We didn't get the actual documents in until July.
31st, 30th.
July 30th. The resolution that y'all adopted gave until January, July, excuse me, July 31st for the superintendent to act on behalf of the district. We would have missed that. So here's the ratification in front of y'all to to act upon so that we can participate in Operation Connectivity as we go forward.
And it does have the dollar amount on page 30 of the agenda. We will be responsible for 213,000 and I will have the money in the budget for that.
Okay. Any discussion before I entertain a motion on item D? Just one question related not to the specific item but to the previous approval. I'm trying to remember, did we put a is what you just said, we put an end date on that authority and that end date was the 31st of July? Okay. Is do you anticipate the need in a future meeting to to extend that authority or have things slowed down to where we're in kind of the normal business cycle of the school district?
Yeah, I remember we did this because we were thinking that we were going to wind up having to turn our elementary schools into COVID care centers for, you know, healthcare workers. Really, that's what kind of spurred all this and we didn't know what else was coming. Do I anticipate that? Is there a need to extend? I think there's a need to extend. If we get into a jam, we can always do a special call meeting.
Right.
And then and address that. That's the way I look at this. So, I mean, we've kind of understood the lay of the land now in regard to the response to this thing. And I don't see anything now that we've got the budget presented, y'all are going to potentially adopt it later on. Would not require that. I think if we get into an extreme situation again to where everything is shut down, would be a time for us to consider that, but not now. Thank you for asking.
Okay. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then on item D.
I recommend approval of Operation Connectivity in locking acquisition agreement with Region Four Education Service Center.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Motion carries. Moving on to item E, which is consider approval of teacher devices for effective delivery of instructional technology for special education instructional staff and devices for special education students.
Similar to what y'all have done in the past in purchasing devices through different budgets. We are now bringing this to y'all for our special education staff and our students. Career technology was another area that we purchased devices with under that budget. Now we're bringing this to y'all from a special ed budget.
Okay. Any comments, questions before I entertain? One question on device device availability. I know we've ordered a lot of stuff. Everything I order at my house seems to come in later. How are we doing for device availability for the beginning of school year or do you know at this point?
Well, we're in good shape on the amount of people that have chosen at-school delivery, at-school learning versus at home. We've also got some other strategies on there that if you've got, you know, more, if you've got siblings at your home, if you didn't have a device, maybe you get one or two of those devices and maybe not four if you got four. So we'll be in better shape there. So we'll be in better shape there. The issue's gonna be, if any time between now and when our devices come in is if the entire world shuts down again like we were, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to punt and figure out something different. We did get caught in some geopolitical stuff. Uh, we did get stuff turned away at the ports that were destined for Tyler ISD that are on their way back to China. Um, our vendor is looking for a different, um, uh, company to deal with, uh, in, in Eastern Asia. Um, that's gonna delay us a little bit. So we're not the only school district that's in this boat. We've got, there are some school districts that have fifty thousand kids that went and ordered forty-five thousand of those, and they were turned back as well. So we've got more than enough to cover what we've anticipated for the at-home learning, um, right now. Um, but again, if we, if we went to full eighteen thousand shutdown, it's certainly gonna be an issue for us. So, um, I'd love to give you a timeline of when that was actually gonna arrive. It was already gonna be pretty close when we ordered those in June. They were gonna be here before school started. Obviously, that's not gonna happen now.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item E.
I move that we approve the quote from Apple from the, uh, for thirty-eight million three fifty-six from the special, special education fund.
Thirty-eight thousand.
I'm sorry. Thirty-eight thousand, whoa.
A bunch of apples, sorry.
Apple has got a little expensive over there.
Let me fix that in the amount of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to the last, uh, item in our action items. It's consider approval of teacher devices for effective delivery of instructional technology.
Yeah, similar to, similar to what we've talked about here. This is on the VPA side of things.
Okay, do I have a motion on item F?
I move we approve the administration's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, we are going on to our continuous improvement section, and we have an athletics update.
As Mr. Priest walks up to the, um, to the podium or to the table, he's gonna wind up giving you an athletics update. Um, kind of what we, how we wrapped up at the end of last year and what we're gonna be moving forward to. There might not be much left about how we wrapped up last year, but kind of what the plan is for this coming year and just some brief talking points in regard to that. After that, we'll have Gary Brown and Sandy Newton as well.
All right, well, thank you for letting me come and present today. Yeah, as Dr. Crawford kind of mentioned, you know, for, as everyone knows, the school year didn't quite end the way we wanted it to. And unfortunately, there were several athletes and several programs that didn't get to finish their season. Uh, it happened right around about spring break. So all your, mostly all your spring sports got some of their preseason games in, and then, then everything ended. So very unfortunate that, that a lot of athletes had to end their career without, you know, getting those, uh, getting shortchanged on that. But, uh, we do have a lot of, uh, let me see if I can, which way I gotta go on this. There it is. There were some great accomplishments that we did have, so we wanna make sure we celebrate those. And, you know, we had, had several district championships. Uh, girls' basketball, Coach Barber's done a great job since he's been at Tyler Lee and, you know, bringing the first state champ, I mean, state championship, first district championship to Tyler Lee since nineteen eighty-six. So that was, that was great. And, uh, what was probably, probably really cool is they were playing at Horn. And, uh, I actually went over and got the trophy from nineteen eighty-six. Took it out of the, took it out of the case and took it and went to Horn, and so had it in the car. And when I knew it was wrapped up, I went and got that trophy and went and presented it to him. So that was pretty cool. Uh, and then, you know, several others, you know, girls, girls' soccer has done really well. And we had some great accomplishments in swim. And then, uh, over at John Tyler, um, Coach Sherman has done a really great job, uh, with the, with the boys' soccer team, and they were co-champs. They were, uh, district champs last year. And so even though those seasons kind of ended, uh, our soccer's, our soccer seasons, and we didn't get to go to playoffs and that, uh, we, we were able to clinch district titles and that. So that was really special. And then going to the playoffs, uh, you know, team tennis made it to area, or area, was area champions again. Uh, cross-country, we got, uh, we had two representatives from Lee that made, um, Nick Knight and Trudy Lamb made it to regionals. Nick wound up making it to the state tournament. Uh, swimming, Caroline Richburg and, and Chase Fields, you know, got to the state meet this time. Uh, great accomplishments for them. And then at John Tyler, uh, team tennis has continued to improve, uh, and they're making it to district, uh, making it to by-district again. And, and then football, making it to the playoffs. And then volleyball had a great season last year. Uh, wound up beating, uh, White House last year, uh, finished, finished, wound up finishing third, but had a great season and, and, uh, really had a chance to win a, to a district title. And I think they're gonna have some great things going this year. As far as summer, with everything ending, uh, everything was kind of up in the air. Um, I will say that our athletic trainers, our coaches did a great job. Uh, we put a plan together, um, to get these student athletes back on campus to do some, some, uh, strength training. We had over four hundred student athletes per day, uh, from the high school, two hundred in the middle school. So that was really good. I think we did, we had a great plan in place. The kids, you know, with, with them getting everything having to end, uh, we've had great turnout for that. We have had some, you, you know, as, uh, uh, we continue to test and do those things. And, and with the UIL extending that modification date, uh, their calendar back, now we're still back into summer strength and conditioning, and we're still trying to carry that on. Uh, there are a lot of hiccups. There are a lot of programs that have not had, not had the opportunity to, uh, you know, they've had to cancel their strength and conditioning across the state. We've been very fortunate. We've been able to continue to keep ours going. Uh, we've had very few cases. Uh, and none of them has transmit, none, none of them has, have come back from catching it at strength and conditioning. It's all been from the outside, so that's been positive. And, and so we're just trying to make it through and get to the school year, uh, and, and try to, hopefully, we're gonna get these seasons going. But we did have, you know, about the same as we did last year, about twenty-seven scholarship athletes that are gonna go on to the next level. Just got, before I came here today, uh, you know, I just wanted to update you on the Rose Stadium improvements. Uh, adding the turf, man, it looks really good. I don't know if, if you guys have had a chance to get over there, but we did, Tim and I did a walkthrough today, and, uh, man, it, it, it really pops. And, uh, so I think you're gonna like what you see, and I think the, you know, it's the best turf. Uh, Dr. Crawford and I went up and looked at some different fields, and, and, uh, so I think we definitely put, put our student athletes, got the best turf available for them, and, and, uh, and I think you're really gonna like what you're gonna see this year. And then being able to dress up one of the big eyesores over there, I know you guys have been in there for graduations at different times. But, but the locker rooms, uh, I was able to get that and use some of my funds, and, and, uh, we knocked that out. So, so we've, we've dressed those up. Uh, so, so all in all, Rose Stadium, doing the press box, doing all those things, getting the turf, we've got probably, in my opinion, the best, best stadium in East Texas by, bar none, so. Uh, and then I just wanted to update you on the UIL, the modifications. Here's kind of a calendar. You know, traditionally, we would have started football and volleyball, and, and, uh, I guess, team tennis and cross-country would have already started on August third. Uh, UIL has pushed that date back, so we'll be starting practice on September seventh. Uh, and you can kind of see the dates, uh, of, you know, of when they will be able to, to start their competitions. You know, football will start on the twenty-fourth. That'll be the, uh, uh, that, that twenty-fourth will be Texas High against Tyler High. And then that's the classic. And then the next night, we'll, we'll have Lufkin coming into town uh, to take on Tyler Legacy. Um, and then so they, they've adjusted some of those. They did not, they adjusted the calendars back. They did not move basketball back. They eliminated tournaments. Uh, so there's, we're probably not gonna see a lot of dual-sport athletes as far as football to basketball, uh, because they're gonna be playing at the same time. So that's unfortunate, uh, for a lot of kids, especially, uh, but that I, I think one of the things that we'll have to do too is, uh, as soon as those freshman seasons are over, those, those kids that are coming into ninth grade that usually play multiple sports or play football and basketball, they'll have to transition over pretty quickly. And so, so we'll get some of the season. But I think as it gets up into the, uh, you know, varsity levels, you're gonna see very few, especially, you know, we're, if football makes a, uh, if football programs make a run in the, in the, uh, state playoffs, then, then that's gonna delay them getting there. But, uh, it, it is what we're, we're dealt with, and, and, uh, and we're just, we wanna make sure that we do everything we can to get these seasons going and staying there. Our stadiums are gonna be at fifty percent. So athletics is gonna look a lot different. Uh, our venues are gonna look different, uh, a lot differently than what they have in the past. And, uh, so that's gonna be a challenge for us to get people to the, you know, as far as getting people in the games.
Coach Priest, I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you mentioned fifty percent capacity. Is there an opportunity for home fans? If we're playing an out-of-town opponent who might bring some band parents and that's it, home fans to go sit on the visitor's side in order to maintain our capacity but still attend the game?
Yes. I, I think we're kind of looking at all options. Uh, we had a call this morning for, uh, seven-five A. And so we're looking at, uh, it, it is, it is fifty percent, but it's also six feet social distance. So that even kind of decreases the fifty percent. And, uh, but yes, we, we're gonna look at, uh, what, what we tried to come up with today, and, and we're still out there. We're still discussing it of what's the minimum amount of tickets that we have to offer to a visiting team to come in. Uh, right now, I, and I gave the numbers to Dr. Crawford the other day, but it was about two thousand is about what we can hold social distance on the visitor's side. Now, we will, I don't think we will offer two thousand tickets to our visiting teams.
We won't.
No, it's gonna be more.
Don't say you don't think we will. We won't.
More to a thousand.
Cause we won't fill our allotment when we go to their places. So we're gonna take care of Tyler during this situation. So I, that's what we're gonna do, so.
All right. Yeah, so that'll be, so yes, we will start moving that, and I think we're looking at even putting the band on the field. Uh, and, and it's still up in the air right now if bands are gonna travel to, out, to the away games. So, uh, that's, those things are on the table right now, so that we're still in discussion with, so.
Okay.
But, uh, but that's it. That's kind of our, uh, you know, we, we're starting new districts this year. So we're in that, back in that rotation right now, and, and, uh, and, and so I, I think things look very good for us, and, you know, our coaches have been working hard, and, and, uh, I think everybody is ready to get back to, to some normalcy and playing athletics. So, uh, so we're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update. Any questions or comments for Coach Priest before we move on to our competitive academics?
Comment, comment. Uh, I, I appreciate the, the update from UIL. I, I think it's gonna be important to, to make our students aware of having to select one over the other. I know it's been an issue with some parents in regards to their kids playing basketball and football in particular. Uh, so I, I think that you're saying that UIL is making, with the change in the times, that they can't do both sports. So right now, and we're in this period for God knows how long, uh, they, the student will have to select one sport over the other. And it's not our choice, but it's the recommendations based on the timing with sports. So I, I think that that's gonna be important to make the parents, as well as the students, aware of that so that they don't think that we're making that decision by chance.
Oh, of course. I mean, that's, I mean, we wanna make sure that they, that, that the student has the opportunity to make the choice that they want to.
Right.
And, uh, but, but it's really just the, the kids that are gonna play football that would like to go play basketball.
Right.
Uh, you know, they're just gonna, it's just gonna be later. Uh, where they've normally picked up, uh, you know, depending on how far you made in the playoffs, they, that you might make it, and they would go, they would get there before district and maybe pick up a couple of tournaments before Christmas. If you make a deep run, the state championship game is on January eighteenth. And so we will already be in the district. So they'll be able to get there. It's just gonna be later. And, uh, but, and then it might sway some kids from going because it's gonna, they're gonna pick up so late. But yes, we will make sure that we, uh, convey that to them that, uh, you know, of, that it's the UIL, not our choice.
Right. I know it's always been a concern within the community regarding those particular sports as if that's the only ones that's important, but it has been, and I've heard it several times in regards to that, so.
Yes, sir.
Raise the question.
Well, Mr. Newton, I'll just go and say this, because I know Coach Priest was a multi-sport letterman in high school, so was I. We, we encourage our kids to play as much as they can for as long as they can. We wanna hold our coaches accountable for doing that. And we have a problem with our coaches when they don't.
Right.
Encourage that. So if you're hearing things in the community, it is not a district philosophy on that. It goes back to the individual sport coach, and we're, we're busting that up.
I understand. I appreciate that.
When we get into this, uh, this issue here, there's gonna be nothing wrong with a kid playing a basketball game while there's football season still going on. It happens in double A and triple A all the time to where you play a baseball game on Tuesday, play a golf tournament on Monday, you go show your goat on Thursday. Then on Saturday, you go run a track meet. So there's nothing wrong with that, and we encourage that. So I just want you to, to, to make sure you can tell your constituents that that is not the district's philosophy. And that we need to know about those things, and we need to work, we will work with our coaches to make sure that it's done the right way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and that was one, we just had our orientation, our coaches' orientation, and that was one of my expectations was to make sure that we are pushing multiple-sport athletes, so. But thank you, guys. I appreciate everything that you do for us, uh, for athletics, and, I mean, y'all have really made us, uh, do some things that we wouldn't be able to without your support, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Coach Priest. We have a competitive academics update as well.
Mr. Brown, uh, his will be brief as well. We didn't get to do a lot of things in the spring that we normally do, but he will address the plan for the upcoming year, if allowed.
Uh, well, good afternoon, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information. And I won't be repetitive in the fact that we obviously had a break in the action in the spring and, and just get right to the update. I had an opportunity in January to share some information of what had occurred in the fall semester, and then looking ahead to the, the spring semester of twenty-twenty. And so we were able to get some of our competitive academic, uh, academic events in. Uh, the, the elementary area meets, where we have all of our elementary schools divided into two different areas, were held. Uh, the Area One meet was held at Caldwell Arts Academy, and this was done the first Saturday, actually, excuse me, the second Saturday in February. Owens Elementary came in first, Caldwell Arts Academy in second, and then Woods Elementary in third. The, uh, the other meet held at, at the same day. This one was held at Rice Elementary School, and we had Rice Elementary, uh, students competing and coming in first place. Jack Elementary in second, and Jones in third. The opportunity was then provided, and we did this for the first time in the twenty nineteen, excuse me, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. These students would have competed and were scheduled to compete in a citywide championship in March, right after spring break. So unfortunately, that was canceled, but did wanna share these results with you. So hopefully, moving forward in the spring, we'll be able to, to do that again. At the middle school level, we followed up two weeks later there at the end of February, and it held the middle school academic meet at Bolter Middle School. And these are the results specifically from those days events. There's also one, a middle school one at play that's separate, and that'll be in the Ms. Newton's report. But, uh, first place, Moore MST Magnet School. Second place was Hubbard Middle School. And with several hundred points garnered by these schools, there's, and these are separated by single points. It was that close, very competitive. Our principals are very supportive of these activities. Third place then at Three Lakes Middle School. And then at the high school level, this is very, very heavy in the spring. And so the, the speaking events occur and begin in the fall. They carry over, over the Christmas break into the spring semester. We were able to get in the UIL Congress debate, and in my January, uh, presentation, I shared the fact. I didn't give detailed information, but that was taking place in January. And, uh, we did have the six A regional champion come from our high school, from now Legacy High School, Olivia Warren, and she was able to advance to the state competition and made it all the way to the finals in, in that debate competition, to place fourth at the state level in six A. And as far as we know, we've looked back in records, this is the highest team that was ever placed, uh, from, from that particular high school. And then, uh, the CX, cross-examination debate competition just got underway, and the six A district champions came out of that, but weren't able to advance to, to the regional competition or the state competition because of the mitigation that occurred in March. And I did wanna mention the, the current technical student organizations that we have. This includes, uh, the health occupation students, the, the future business leaders, all of those organizations that we have. And we had forty-seven students out of approximately a hundred and sixty that competed at the area and district level that had advanced to their state-level competitions that were scheduled to take place in March, April, and early May. And unfortunately, the move first was to virtual competition, and then gradually, the decision was made in the spring. and then gradually the decision was made in the spring to not even hold the virtual competitions. So unfortunately, those students didn't get to compete at state. But we did have 40 students, so 47 students that would have competed at the state level in these competitions. Just to look ahead, a quick look ahead, it's very similar. There are no proposed changes to the UIL academic calendar moving forward. So as you look ahead, both locally and at the state, UIL calendar, January is when we hold our Tyler ISD local robotics competition for elementary and middle school students. That's still on the calendar, and we certainly hope to be able to do that. January and February then is when the current technical student organizations hold their state qualifying competitions. So those will occur, and those are still on schedule, as they have been in the past. February is when we pick up our UIL middle school meets, the two that I mentioned previously. So those will still be held. The area meets will, and then we'll hold the middle school district competition. Students are not able to advance out of the local level at the elementary and middle school level in UIL academics. March is when we held the citywide championships for our elementary schools, and that is where the high schools pick up their UIL district meets that they were unable to hold this year. And from there, the regional academic contest, 6A is held in Region Two at Baylor University. The 5A competition, regional competition will be held at Prosper High School. And they actually have a new high school, so they could move it to the other one, but it'll be in Prosper ISD. April and May is when the state contests are held, qualifying for nationals for current technical student organizations. May is our state finals for UIL academics. And we really, like I said, we, we felt like we were going to have some students make it to the level, and are hoping to have that this year. And then June and July is when, if we had a student advance in CTSO's, that we go to the national competition. Just kind of my summary. And our principal, one thing I'd like to say, our principals are super supportive. These things supplement and support all of our academic programs. And our, our teacher coaches and our principals are very supportive, and they're very competitive, and it bodes well for these events.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Brown here? It was a good update. We appreciate you. We appreciate all the successes you're having in, in UIL.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay. Last but not least, our return-
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have Ms. Newton coming up for VPA.
VPA, that's right.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you again for allowing me to give you an update. So as you've heard, things were kind of strange in the spring, so we didn't get to participate in, in some of the other traditional events that we do. However, this was the first time that Tyler ISD hosted the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, which is the visual arts equivalent to the UIL competitions. I'm proud to say that Tyler stayed strong with 10 state-based pieces, that we did, we did have that competition in a virtual atmosphere, as opposed to actually physically being present. And for the first time ever, Tyler High School had a state piece ever in the school's history, which was really a great thing. Incidentally, since we host all three of the visual arts UIL equivalent, which would be vase for the high school, junior vase in the middle school, and team, which is Texas Elementary Art Meet, we will still host those in the upcoming academic year, because they will all be held virtually, as opposed to in person. We were very excited this year that Francis Callan-Gibson had, Wonderful Woman, had donated to Tyler ISD a foundation, or an endowment. And so we use those funds to give fine arts specific grants to our teachers. And we saw a dramatic increase in the number of grants that were awarded to fine arts related activities. I think in the 2019, 2018, 2019 school year, it was roughly $13,700 for just the Grants for Great Ideas. And for the Grants for Great Ideas, it jumped for 2019, 2020 to $19,000, in addition to the $9,000 that was offered for the Francis Callan. I know Francis Callan is smiling somewhere right now, very excited about that. So over this mitigation period, I'm very proud of our fine arts teachers, because they've worked really hard to go and learn new ways to approach fine arts education. Our motto right now is we're focusing on what we can do, as opposed to what we can't do. And we will focus on our fundamentals, so that when things do get to a place that's somewhat normal, that we can just pick up right where we left off. And so they've been attending Texas Bandmasters Association, Art of Education, offered some things, National Federation for High Schools, Texas Music Educators Association, Texas Orchestra Directors Association, theater associations, Texas Art Education, and I could go on. They have been working very hard to attend those things. And we were awarded for the inaugural year scholarships to the Center for Educator Development and Fine Arts, for our teachers to attend some professional learning experiences there. And what's really interesting about those is they can continue to go back and reference them. It wasn't a one-time, let me get this information and go back. They have access to video that was collected when they attended these, so they can go back for future reference as well. And of course, I'm very proud to say that the Tyler ISD for the second year was awarded from the National American Music Merchants Foundation Best Communities for Music Education Award. And that goes to our hard, I thank you, giant thank you, to our very hardworking educators. But it wouldn't be possible without a school board that supports us as, as well as you do. So thank you for all of your support with that as well.
Yeah, that's great news. Proud of that. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing here. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Newton? Okay, great update. Thank you so much. Now we're moving on to return to learn update.
I'm going to ask Mr. Bitter to go ahead and come up here to the table. Mr. Jones, you can come over here as well. Dr. Hanson, come to the tables. We answer questions once we get there, regardless of what we're working on. In your packets that were mailed to y'all, you actually got a hard copy of what the return to learn plan is. It's been online now for a couple of weeks. The initial plan was to actually roll this out today, but under better decision-making was to go ahead and get it out there to the public as well, so they could actually start looking at it. It actually is online. It's available in English and Spanish. And it's a very fluid document. I think we're on update number eight in regard to that. Is that correct, Ms. Heinz? Update number eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, update number eight, in regard to some adjustments, as TEA recommendations and public health recommendations seem to have slowed down a little bit. But they certainly were very jumpy throughout the entire last five months. So we feel like we have a, a plan in place to go forward. These folks have pretty intimate details in regards to the plans, as, as does Ms. Heinz behind me, as we go through that. And I wanted to highlight just a few slides in regard to some of the adjustments in the return to learn update. You know, at one time, we had talked about temperature checks of every, every student coming into the building. And medical advisories here locally, and other webinars and other things that we've been talking to, has, has actually gotten away from that, because it does wind up stacking up logistically students on top of students. And they recommended that the parents are familiarized with the screening metrics in regard to that, and trusting that we don't send our kids to school when they're ill, just like we do whenever we have the flu, or there might be lice or something like that. So it's not like schools have not been going through this, you know, since compulsory schooling has been required in regard to dealing with some of these illness outbreaks or other types of infectious stuff that may, may or may not be pervasive in the community. So what we're doing is, is certainly the temperature checks on the adults that do come in, and either they can do that at home, or they can do that at the school. I know I've, I've got a thermometer right by my sink. I take my temperature every morning before I come into work. And I think that's a good practice to, to go by as well. Another health protocol update is you may return to school 24 hours fever-free, without use of fever-reducing medications. That was actually 20, 72 hours prior to. So that's been an adjustment as well. TEA face shields are allowed for third grade and younger. We're actually recommending face coverings for those who can manage K through 12, students and staff. We've been modeling that over the last couple of weeks, since we came out with that announcement. And I think that that is something that, that will, a best practice that will allow us to continue to have in-person schooling, as long as everybody's doing that. Some folks have asked if there will be discipline afforded, but if somebody's not wearing a mask, or if we're going to fine them 50 cents if they're not, if they don't bring their mask to school. We're not doing that. But we are going to do a lot of coaching, a lot of encouragement, that says that we want to keep folks healthy. We want to make sure that, that we do that, that there's a covering between my mouth and you've got a covering in your mouth. There's two coverings between our two mouths, so that we don't transmit that virus. You know, there's a lot of folks on either side of that debate. Y'all know that. Y'all been keeping up with that. And we're trying to take the politics out of our schools, and that's one thing we don't want to do. That is going to be something that's mandated here, that we want to have happen. And we're very clear about that with our staff, and with our students, and with our parents, that we want that to happen, for morale purposes and from hygienic purposes as well. So there'll be a lot of the other hygienic practices going on throughout the day, the constant coaching, as long as we're having to go through this, so that we can continue to go to in-person school. That's, that's the philosophy on this. Again, hygienically speaking and morale speaking, that's what we want to do. So. All right. But the face shields are allowable as well. Certainly, there are some times when students have some type of other health issue that will need to happen. We'll make sure that that's communicated to the appropriate teachers, provide them some coaching points on how to go about maybe dealing with someone who cannot wear a mask. We want to make sure that we're, we're FERPA, I mean, excuse me, yeah, HIPAA, that we're HIPAA clear on that, and making sure if there is a medical issue there, that we're not just disclosing that everywhere, but, but sensitive to those issues as we go forward. Legitimate HIPAA issue.
Right. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Face shield with the mask or without the mask?
You know, that's, we're actually handing out a, you're talking about for students or staff?
Well, staff.
Staff, okay. So we're, we're actually, for our instructional classroom staff.
Okay.
That and, and that. Now, obviously, yeah, obviously, they can, you know, maybe if they need to take it down, then they get appropriate distance apart from folks, if they could possibly do that.
Okay.
But each instructional staff person in a classroom will receive an actual face shield. Rachel in here?
No.
Okay. I think we got 2,000 of those, and I think we have about 1,800 of those that I just described. And so we'll actually put them in that type of gear as well. Some parents have talked about wearing the face shield as opposed to that. So we're, we're still going to encourage the face covering. We really are. I mean, that's just, again, two barriers between my mouth and your mouth. I think that's the best practice that we can go to, just so we can maintain having school.
Okay.
Have you identified at-risk employees?
We've got, that, working with our Health Services Department and Human Resources, we do have a list for those that are willing to provide that information to us. Yes, sir. Is that correct, Rojo?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Any special accommodations being made for them for this coming year?
So that, that's something that, that's probably going to wind up getting down to the campus level, in regard to that, as far as, why don't you go and take me through that?
Yes, there is a, a process that we, we have for employees that have concerns to go through. And it is with that, the federal act, that they came to partner with, FMLA. But beyond that, we just ask those individuals to be in clear communication with the campus administration. And as we get numbers on kids that are coming for face-to-face instruction, and those that are choosing to be virtual, then decisions will be made at the campus level, that certain individuals or certain teachers might have the opportunity to teach virtually. They will be on campus, but they will have the opportunity to teach virtually there. So there could be some give and take at the campus level for individuals that may find themselves at a certain risk level.
Question. Have you had any that have come forth thus far, within the district that you know of?
Yes, sir.
Several?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that've been, yes, that've been several.
We're, we're, we're in the 60, 40, 70, 30 range on the choice of at-home learning versus come to school. It kind of fluctuates a little bit. We're getting better data. We actually have 12,000 data points now. For a while there, we were operating at only about 6,000. So that's not a very good sample when you're starting to start about. We've got two-thirds responses back from our, out of our 18,000-plus students. And so we're, we're kind of getting a better feel for that. It'll evolve over time. In fact, the window just closed yesterday. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. So now we can actually rush to make the plan of what the, each campus will look like in, in preparation of.
Did make a choice by yesterday?
We're always going to be, I mean, that's your planning purposes.
Right, so y'all call them or they just-
Locking them in, something. I mean, if a kid shows up the first day of school and they actually chose at-home learning, we're going to teach them at school.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So 70, 30, 60, 40, kind of ish?
It's kind of fluctuating up and down right there.
All right. So that'll, that will allow for a little more adequate distancing in school?
Naturally.
Naturally.
Absolutely. So when you start talking about the logistics that are in here, that, that's going to naturally allow us to socially distance where we need to, on top of some of the other logistics that we have, like one-way hallways, not changing class periods quite as often as we normally do. Obviously, at the high schools, you know, you're talking about, what, 5,000 students, I guess, about, somewhere around there, 5,500. Them going to block scheduling is a natural reduction in exposure opportunity. Because we know this, we've been watching the newspaper, we've seen other school districts that have already opened across the nation. It's with us. You're not going to, you're not going to bat a thousand on this thing. But what you can do is reduce the exposure opportunities. And that's what we've been trying to do. I think that's why this plan is the way it is. And then the natural reduction, the amount of students that we have coming to, to at-school learning, will something, be something that, that provides another little safety net on that, parachute on that.
Okay.
The 24-hour fever-free, does that apply to extracurriculars?
Yeah, a lot of the same thing happens in extracurriculars that we're talking about here as well. Yes, sir.
Is there any difference in the trend on in-person versus at-home learning at elementary, middle, or high?
I think we're, I think we're messing with that data right now. It's been an aggregate this entire time. And now we've, we've got everything in. We've actually got it broken out per campuses and everything like that, so we can get that to you. I'll send that out to the board, once we figure that out. But right, it's, it's been a pretty big data mine coming in on this stuff.
I do have one question regarding the 24-hour fever-free. Is that for just any student with anything? And does it differ if there's COVID diagnosis and there's another, is there another set of criteria for that?
For a different illness?
No, for COVID.
For COVID?
Right.
Yeah, so refresh mind. I wish Rachel was in here, because she would be able to tell us. Jared, you might know a little bit about that.
So as close as I can get to this, there are two separate things. One of those is obviously for someone who is actively showing symptoms and reporting signs of that. And then the other one is for a positive test.
Right.
And without speaking in absolutes, one of those requires a 10-day absence or symptom-free kind of experience. And then the other one is an automatic 14. And so, but, but both of those are obviously are taken in, into account. And they are separate just from the, obviously, i-if the fever does come with a COVID diagnosis, then the COVID protocol trumps the 24-hour.
Sure. Okay. And then just clarifying that.
From the same perspective, we have to remember that the temperature is not necessarily always associated with COVID.
Absolutely.
There are a number of individuals that have been diagnosed with COVID that do not run temperatures. So that's just one of the symptoms, along with all the other symptoms associated with COVID. So an individual that has a temperature doesn't necessarily mean that they're COVID-positive. They could have something else going on as well. So as well as being very much aware. And that's why it's so important about the face coverings, as well as the mouth coverings, that individuals may not have the symptoms displayed, but they still can be a carrier. So it's real important that we understand that, and not just accept the fact that if they're running a temperature, they definitely must have COVID or anything else. The temperature may not be there. The temperature may not be there in any of those conditions. Even with a common cold, some kids don't run temperatures.
Yeah, that's why I was making sure there's a difference.
Temperature is just one of the symptoms of COVID and not necessarily a defining factor of COVID.
Yeah, we've never wanted students to come to school when they have a temperature.
Right.
So, that's a pretty easy guideline for us, that we've always traditionally routinely encouraged our parents, don't send your kid to school if they've got a fever. That usually means if they've got strep or if they've got flu, that they are contagious in regard to that. But we also understand that there's also other symptoms that go along with that as well. That's why the self-checks at home are extremely important and to be aware of that. And even if they get reported to us in our classroom, we've got healthcare staff on campus that can automatically kick into that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Campuses are now in the process of implementing their own Return to Learn protocols and the campus procedures. You know, we've tried to standardize some of the things the best we possibly could, but Dixie's layout is different than Woods', and Woods' layout is different than Ramey', and Ramey's layout is different than Owens'. I can go on and on and on. And so, in regard to that, there's a lot of those things that are certainly in play here. There's also in play different student populations and maybe as far as underlying health conditions and what accommodations you're making there. Same thing with staff as well, and so we're doing that as well. Transportation, we are finding that, this is one note, that, you know, obviously, we're doing the, I think, eight times a day, I think, is what I saw John Bagger say in a video as far as the cleaning of the buses, depending upon how many routes they run and where they run their routes and to what schools. So, there's going to be a lot of cleaning that'll be conducted at that time. Obviously, protecting our bus drivers is important and making sure that the things that are followed logistically on those buses, per recommendations of our Medical Advisory Board that were made up of local, excuse me, physicians and other medical personnel along with Net Health, to making sure that our buses do have some sort of ventilation, whether it's blazing hot outside or even when it gets cold outside too, to making sure we're cracking those windows and circulating the fresh air as well. Students, making sure that we're actually masking up as well, or, excuse me, face covering any student that actually gets on the bus and whatnot. So, they'll also be armed with the paper mask on the buses to be able to provide a student, if they've lost their mask as well, so to make sure that they are wearing those masks, those coverings. I hate saying mask. Face cover, because you may wind up doing the ascot like I'm doing. So, you know, I think that our ridership, as far as signing up for ridership, it's a tad down to us. So, I think a lot of parents are also saying that instead of a convenience to send them on a bus, that they're actually going to bring their students to school, and we actually encourage that if they possibly can. Certainly, that'll be another one of those things. Plus, you also think about the thirty percent that have chosen, that have identified that they're going to stay at home to learn. Some of those will actually be former bus riders as well. So, I think there will be that natural reduction in the amount of students who are riding our bus as well. Grouping, I'm just kind of going down the list of my mind. Grouping students, you know, per their household, or maybe even if, say, they live in an apartment complex or they're next-door neighbors, you think that they're probably playing with each other, so that them sitting next to each other might be a benefit as well. And don't forget our buses, especially for, you know, the K through five kids are so tall that it's going to provide a natural barrier to any type of maybe projection of droplets that might be coming their way as well. So, that's going to be a benefit as well. There are other, obviously, y'all know where you can go to do this, but we've also set this up to where there's a Q and A page at TylerISD.org, Return to Learn. Sometimes we'll give it to the campus if it's campus-specific, but we're able to maybe answer some of those questions ourselves in regard to that. What other questions may you have in regard to the Return to Learn plan?
Pretty clear on it. Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, well?
Yeah, just one question. Nationally, we see certain groups getting very active protesting a desire not to go back to work based off of a whole host of factors. How would you gauge our staff's eagerness to return, either just broadly, or are we going to have an issue with folks who are going to resist coming back to work, or do you think we're going to be all hands on deck?
So, think and gut feel and all that kind of stuff, and maybe I don't know is an answer. But I know there's a lot of information that people have been studying for the last five months, that we've all been studying too, and it can be influenced one way or the other in regard to how you feel about this stuff. I have confidence in our staff that they realize that the reason they're in education is that they want to educate children. Obviously, our priority is to continue to keep people healthy and safe, and I will go ahead and say it, I'm anxious about it. Not bravado enough to not think that there's a concern for our staff or for those individuals that are sitting in here with us today, y'all that are in here, or even myself. So, I get it, but we also need to educate our kids, and I do believe that I have a little bit more Pollyanna about this. I believe that by the time that we get used to it, that we'll do what we need to do to find a way to win. Yeah, I've got, I've heard from folks that are just not wanting to come at all and that need to make a business decision, because that's what this ultimately is, about whether or not you want to continue your job in Tyler ISD or any other school system across the state, because we're not the only one going through this. That's what's so, I think it's beneficial to us, is everyone's experiencing the same type of pulse to those that are like, I don't want to wear a mask, I'm coming to work, and that's not where we want to be either. So, I think that there's that balance in there about managing your staff and your personnel and your faculty to make sure that you're doing what you can to make sure that they're as safe as possibly can be and you're not reckless. And that's what we've been preaching since March, is we're not going to be reckless about this. But we also are confined by some restrictions on this as well. We don't have a choice just to do digital. There's not a whole lot of school systems that can pull that off anyways. So, here we go. So, I know I didn't answer your question, because I don't know is an answer, and I hate having that type of answer for you.
Question. Regarding on the campuses, I know that there's concern regarding custodial staff on the campus all day and the amount of cleaning that's going to be done on that campus. You know, you hear various complaints that there wasn't, well, some people felt that it wasn't adequate prior to the COVID, and so they felt like it's going to be inadequate now in addition to COVID. How do you address that concern?
Well, there's got to be a lot of cleaning of your classroom as well when materials are available. Students can clean off desks, teachers can clean desks as well. I disagree with what that concern says, that there wasn't enough, because I can go to some campuses that have the same amount of staff that are sparkling. I can go to a different campus that that complaint may be coming from, and it's a filthy, dirty campus.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying, I think we're staffed appropriately, per guidelines, per standards, per the square footage guidelines that is recommended by who, Tasha? Who recommends that, the square footage? Yeah.
But there are recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely, and we follow those, and we staff our campuses that way. And again, I look at the quality of the work that's being done versus the other quality of the work that's being done. And Casey Ross runs our custodial, she's the lead on that and does a good job of keeping it staffed with folks that take care of our buildings pretty well. And if there's a specific campus that you and I'd like to talk about, we can, and I can see what we can do about it. But as far as a general district-wide philosophy and feeling of that, the front porch is extremely important to us and taking care of our yard, what it looks like on the outside and what it looks like on the inside and how clean it is, and that philosophy is not going to go away.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is maybe it's the quality of the individual custodial staff per campus as opposed to not being staffed efficiently?
We staff per data, per the recommendations. We do that across the district, top to bottom, from the superintendent's seat all the way down to bus drivers, I guess, for those that are part-time staff. Same thing with custodians as well. So, we're not light on that. We would love to throw ten custodians every day at an elementary school. But we're going to wind up going broke doing that. It's just hiring good people and them wind up doing the best job that they possibly can, and then everyone pitching in to keep a campus clean. Though, that philosophy hasn't changed in regard to that. We just need to put a little extra, extra elbow grease into it. I think we did update in the Return to Learn, the standards for cleaning custodian stuff as well. I know our budget is higher this year for cleaning supplies than in past years as well. A little concerned about some of that as far as what, you know, the length, amount of time that we do have in reserve. You know, it'll get us through Christmas, if not a little bit longer, so that'll be something we need to contend with as far as what we've projected.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I guess nobody else has any more questions or comments, so we appreciate y'all. And that is the last real agenda item on here, aside from going into the executive session. Dr. Crawford, do we have any potential action or anything coming out of?
No, sir.
Okay. I guess we'll pop into executive session, and then we can close out afterwards. All right?
Sorry.
Okay, we'll now go into executive session.